He's in town.
He's in town.
He's back in town.
He's in town.
Girl, I knew just what was wrong.
He's in town.
When you were at home each time I phoned all week long. And now I see in your eyes.
He's in town.
The look that you have when you're thinking of him can't be disguised. I was afraid he'd come back someday. I'd be the one to lose. I knew when you saw him you wouldn't ignore him and he'd be the one. Be the one you choose. No, you don't have to tell me. He's in town.
He's in town.
He's back in town.
He's in town.
No, you don't have to tell me. He's in town.
He's in town.
He's back in town.
He's in town.
He's in town.
He's in town.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the July 31st meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian. Devine.
Here.
Karpetian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Sinanian.
Here. Today's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Paula Devine. Please remain standing for the invocation afterwards.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for today's invocation of Reverend Rich Garner, Senior Pastor, First United Methodist Church of Glendale.
Let us pray. On this day, oh God, we pray that we would be a people of compassion, that as leaders we would hear the voices of those who are in need in this generous community of Glendale, that we would learn to care for others out of our common hope to enrich the whole community, that we would seek justice, that we would act mercifully, that we would humbly stand with each other together seeking solutions for the problems we face. Grant us a renewed vision of a city at peace where all are free to live meaningfully and with joy. Guide us in our discussions so that we act for the benefit of all. This we pray as people seeking the good, the right, the healing, the holy. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Reverend Garner. May we have the report, please?
The agenda for the July 31st, 2018 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Friday, July 27, 2018, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please?
Next item would be presentation and appointments.
What's the first appointment?
Agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, August 7, 2018.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. The regular Housing Authority and City Council meeting for August 7, 2018 have both been canceled. The next regular meeting will be on August 14th. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Golonian. What's next on the agenda?
Next would be three B, appointment of Board and Commission members. The one would be Savanas Adorian, Arts and Culture Commission.
Thank you. And I have nominated Savanas Adorian for the Arts and Culture Commission. She's a graduate of University of San Francisco and politically very active person. She was my campaign manager in my last campaign. She has a keen interest in arts and expertise and I have therefore nominated her for this position. I don't know if someone wants to move the item or...
I'll second your motion.
Okay. Do I have to hand this over before I make the motion? Okay, I will do that. I move that Savanas Adorian be appointed to the Arts Commission, Arts and Culture. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Karpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. Next item, please?
Second would be Steven Charchan, Planning Commission.
And Mr. Charchan is also my nominee. He is a graduate of the University of Southern California Marshall School of Business. The specification of his major is real estate development and I'm nominating him for the Planning Commission. I will cast the gavel once again. Move that he be approved as Planning Commissioner.
Second.
Thank you. May we have the roll call, please?
No, would you, do we have a second?
Oh, you...
Second, second.
Roll call, please.
Maybe, thank you.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Karpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian.
Thank you. Yes, and now thank you. And I wanted to ask if both, I think both commissioners, there haven't been sworn in, so to be sworn in commissioners are here. If they want to say a few words, they don't have to, but I'll start with Mr. Charchan.
I'll just keep it brief, but I want to say thank you, Mayor Sinanian, for this honor and thank you for the City Council. I look forward to doing my part in serving Glendale moving forward and just looking forward to getting to work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good luck. And Savanas Adorian.
I would like to thank Mayor Sinanian for appointing me and all the council members for voting me in. I look forward to working on the Arts and Culture Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, and let's move on to the next item. We have an extra item that we're, has just been added to our agenda as a result of closed session and it's an added appointment. Ms. Spears.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. It is with great pleasure that I bring forward to all of you this evening the appointment of the Chief Information Officer for the City of Glendale, and that would be Jason Bradford. As you all know, we had an extensive recruitment open process for this position over the last few months and by far Jason Bradford is the most qualified and most prepared individual to take the role of CIO here in the City of Glendale. Prior to Glendale, Jason worked for a manufacturing company here in Glendale in their financial unit. I actually learned that yesterday because that was many years ago. He has been with the City of Glendale for about 19-plus years. His career started with Glendale in 1998 where he was the technical lead for end-user support and trainer for all city departments and individuals on our PeopleSoft financial system. And it's because of his technical background and financial background that made him very good for that position and he was very well-qualified, I should say. And you will hear me say technical and financial background a number of times because he comes with extensive experience in both of those areas, which I think makes him quite unique to be the CIO for Glendale. Jason has a CPA and was hired in 2000 in our internal audit department and he was the principal internal auditor. He also was the acting city auditor for almost a year back in 2009, 2010. In July of 2010, we had a need in our budget department in terms of internal controls, cost allocation plans that needed to be implemented and the person that came to mind to head up that division within our finance department was Jason Bradford and he was willing to take on that role and took it on willingly and implemented a lot of systems and processes. I think that just makes us stronger within the finance department and within the City of Glendale and we utilize those systems until today. Again, because of his technical background, especially as a programmer in early 2015, we asked him for more help and we asked him at this time to head up the implementation of the MUNIS system and we knew that his ability to have a steady hand and understanding of the technical background of PeopleSoft, our financial needs as well as the human resources needs to help shepherd that entire process within the City of Glendale and have someone who is good at change management and well-respected in the organization to head up that team and Jason said yes to that and was doing that until 2017 when we asked him to step in as the interim Chief Information Officer when our former CIO left to take on another position in another municipality. So Jason has said yes to a number of things within this organization again and he has always been seen as that individual who has the aptitude, who has the skill set, who has the technical knowledge, who has the professionalism and the integrity and the ability to be able to connect with the organization, with the department, with the executive team, with the City Council and the community and he's done a yeoman's job in the last 19 years. Again, his knowledge of IT coupled with his financial background and his desire to run toward innovation. Not all CIOs are well-versed in that arena and want to run towards innovation. He is one person that I've met within that world who is not afraid to run towards innovation and will do it with open arms and I see that as a very good quality in Jason. I've said this a number of times, probably one of the smartest people you will meet. Don't let that get to your head, Jason, but he is and he's humble. He's very humble and you would never feel it when you are talking with him. He's well-respected, as I said earlier. He has a bachelor's degree from Brigham Young University, masters from Pepperdine. He's a CPA. He's a CIA, which is a certified internal auditor. And lastly, he's also a certified information systems auditor, which is CISA. With that, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, it is my pleasure to ask for your support in appointing Jason Bradford as our new Chief Information Officer for the City of Glendale.
I make a motion.
Comments or motions?
A little more complicated than that, unfortunately. I move that pursuant to the Glendale City Charter and Government Code Section 54957.1A5, the Council of the City of Glendale hereby approves the City Manager's appointment of Jason Bradford as the Chief Information Officer for the City of Glendale. Pursuant to Article 24, Section 10 of the City Charter, the Civil Service Commission shall certify the appointment to the Director of Human Resources.
Second.
May we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Karpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian. Yes. Congratulations, Mr. Wagner. Glad to say a few words.
Well, good evening. First, I'd like to thank our City Manager, Ms. Spears, for your kind words and all of your support and encouragement and recommended me for this position. I truly appreciate it. To Mayor Sinanian, members of the Council, I'd like to thank you for this amazing opportunity. I am truly grateful and humbled. Glendale has been my home for nearly 20 years and I consider it an honor and privilege to serve this city. I'd also like to thank my parents, who unfortunately couldn't be here. But I wouldn't be standing here before you. I wouldn't be the person that I am today if not for them. I'm truly blessed to work with an incredible executive team. It's an honor to continue to work amongst you. And of course, I'd like to thank the men and women that comprise the Information Services Department. It's an incredible department comprised of super-talented people that have accomplished quite a bit over the past couple of years and it's a privilege to continue to work with them as we continue to roll out IT projects and initiatives. As Chief Information Officer for the City of Glendale, I will strive to deliver technologies that really make a difference in how we serve our residents of the community and do it in a fiscally responsible manner. Once again, I'd like to thank Council for this opportunity. I stand before you truly humbled and honored to serve in this capacity for the City of Glendale. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. Want to say a few words?
So congratulations, Jason. Keep us out of harm's way. Keep the information flowing both ways and the computer systems up and... both ways, and the computer systems up, and all the broadband free and clear. So, congratulations. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, Jason. We've had several or few appointments in the last few months, and I got to tell you, this is one of the most sincere, one of the most sincere, not this, one of the most sincere comments or speeches that was made here. I, I really appreciate your, your sincerity in this, and you passed the, the dedication and commitment test. You've been here for twenty years, and we're looking forward to working with you in many, many more years to come. So, congratulations.
Ms. Devine?
Well, Jason, congratulations. Well deserved. I know that I worked with you many years ago, about, gee, it must have been ten years ago, on an issue, and you solved it quite nicely, so I appreciate that. And I'll give you my computer so you can block number nine-five-seven-six-four-five, whoever that may be, from my computer. Thank you.
I'll do all right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I know people are waiting for other issues there here, so one more time, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations from me as well. I really liked your comment as well. I, I think your sincerity, your passion for Glendale came through, and we look forward to you working with us and us working with you for as long as you, you retain that passion and that love for Glendale and what you do. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, and send your regards to your parents.
Will do. Thank you.
Next item, consent items?
Following our routine, it may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of Council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such a request before motion is proposed. There has been one card submitted for 4B.
And I would like to pull that item myself, but I guess someone's pulling it. So, will someone move the balance of the calendar?
I'll move the balance of consent calendar.
May we have the roll call on the balance?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Karpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Item 4B, please read into the record.
Director of Community Services in Parks regarding design, development, and construction documents for the Duque majin Park Nature Education Center, Project Phase Six, Part Three. The one motion amending the existing contract with Gwen Poch Urban Studios Incorporated of San Monica to add design, development, and construction document fa, phases to the contract for the amendment of 2014, one hundred fifty, two-hundred-fourteen thousand, one hundred fifty plus a ten percent contingency for a total not to exceed amount of two-hundred-thirty-five-thousand, five-hundred-sixty-five dollars for, for the amendment.
Mr. Bulanikin, I have a card, so maybe I'll, I'll call up the speaker, and then I, I can tell you what I want to hear. Sherry Stubbs?
Good evening, Ms. Stubbs.
We're here to support the project. As you know, you've all been involved with us from the beginning. Now, we're in the final phase, is Phase Four, Part Three, and it's our understanding that it's been budgeted. I'm not sure what the concern is here with this particular contract, but we just want you to know that we are here in support of the project. We need to finish it. It is, as Part Three, Phase Four says, if I can find that real quick. And I can't. No, here it is. It's the final phase of the project, and we'll complete the adaptive reuse of the barn as a nature education center and community building. This is so important for us, not only for us in the Far North, but also for the schools. As you know, the children come up to the park as well, they're bused with their respective programs through the city. So, that is the purpose of my speaking tonight.
Okay.
And please, if there's any concern with this contract that might affect it, please include us so that we have a chance to...
Thank you. Did you anticipate me pulling this item? Did you anticipate me having concerns with the, with the contract?
Well, I'm just looking at the agenda, and it says, um...
But it's a consent item. Unless, until you, unless you or I had removed it from the consent calendar, it would have just passed automatically. So, in any case, thank you for your comments. My question is simple. Where is the funding for this item coming from? Mr. Bulanikin?
Mayor Sinanian, members of the Council, the last phase will be funded by DIF fees and CIP. We have a two-point-five, both Phase Four, Part Two and Phase Four, Part Three, we have three million dollars budgeted, two-point-five million in DIF and five-hundred in...
So, these are downtown impact fees?
Yes.
But this is the same two-point-five million dollars that we approved in 2016, right?
Yes.
These are not new monies. This is budgeted for, we're not touching any additional downtown impact fees.
We're not touching any additional. This was budgeted on March 29th, 2016, as part of the DIF strategic plan, of two-point-five million being allocated to this project.
Very well. Thank you. I have no more questions or concerns.
Since you pulled the items, Mr. Mayor.
Sir, go ahead.
So, Phase Four, Part Two, you said? Is this for Phase Four, Part, Part Two, or Phase?
Phase Four, Part Three. Uh, Part Two was the mechanical systems.
So, that's done already?
That's completed.
Okay, so this is for the two-point-five million dollars is for the restroom? This, this?
We currently have one-point-eight million, which will be for the restroom, the nature education center, and the construction document phase.
So, one-point-eight million. So, the seven-hundred-thousand dollars is coming from where?
We have one-point-eight million left for the, for this project.
For this project?
Yes.
Okay, it's from that two-point-five million, one-point-eight million.
Yes.
And the part, the last, last part is, is how much, how much for that? Five-hundred-thousand?
The last part, we have one-point-eight mil...
Final part.
The final part is one-point-eight million. So, right now, out of that one-point-eight million, we're asking two-hundred-thirty-five thousand for the construction, design, development, and construction phase, and then the leftover money will be for construction and project management.
And you can manage the whole thing for, with one-point?
Yes.
Five-something, yeah? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You move the item, Mr. Karpetian?
I'll move the item.
Second?
May we have the roll call, please?
Thank you.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Karpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian? Yes. So, it passed, Ms. Stubbs. It's all good. Next item, City Council Staff Comments.
I have no comments, Mr. Mayor.
You have no comments, Mr. Najarian?
No.
No comments? I will mention that we had a, can we have silence in the chamber, please? We did have a series of events in, in connection to the Comfort Women Day last week, both on Friday and on Saturday, and council members attended those events, and they were very heartfelt. They were very well-organized. And again, we're, we're keeping in the tradition of honoring victims of crimes against humanity, violence against women, and we're going to continue, and that statue is going to be in Central Park to stay. So, I'm going to keep my, my comments short. Do you have a?
Just one quick item. If I can ask Sergeant McToto to come up and give you a quick announcement regarding National Night Out, which is happening next week, very quick.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian, members of City Council. I'm Sergeant Patrick McToto. On behalf of the Police Department, I'd like to make one final push for the 35th Annual National Night Out to be held one week from today, August 7th, from six-ish to wherever the night takes us. As you know, it is such an important annual event as it raises awareness against crime. It builds neighborhood spirit and bonding and, and community partnerships. So, so far, we have about twenty-six sites located, and, and you can still, you can still sign up now through the City of Glendale website under the police domain, or you can call the number above, eight-one-eight-five-four-eight-forty-fifteen, and we can connect you to a location. There's going to be good eats, there's barbecues, and food trucks in some places, ice cream, and games. So, I encourage all Glendale residents to come out and participate. It's going to be a fun-filled event.
Thank you, Sergeant McToto, and, and thank you for all the help that you provide to council members during National Night Out, because we circulate throughout the city. We run from one corner to the next, and actually, we don't have to run because you're there. So, thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next item, which is community event announcements, and we have...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, are we going to do the DG item first?
Yeah, let's do that. Okay, so why don't we take item number nine-C out of order, and then we'll follow on with community event announcements. Who's going to read that into the record?
Director of Community Development regarding Greater Downtown Glendale Community Benefit District ballot phase, C1, resolution of formation forming the Greater Downtown Glendale Community Benefit District.
Okay. Ms. McLean?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Heremoto, I'm so sorry. I did that in the afternoon as well.
Okay, I, I did that earlier as well.
I keep referring back to your maiden name.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of Council. The item before you tonight is one of the final steps in the ballot phase for the creation of the Greater Downtown Glendale Community Benefit District. As presented at the public hearing back on June 12th, the Greater CBD is proposed to have a ten-year term commencing January 1st, 2019, in the area that will extend beyond the 134 freeway to Stalker and west to Central Avenue. This request was, well, built upon the establishment of the current Business Improvement District, and it was actually prompted by property owners north of the 134 freeway who wish to have the same level of service that is currently enjoyed within the downtown Glendale area. Following the Council's adoption of the resolution of intent back on June 12th, property owners were then, they received a ballot. So, they had forty-five days from the date of that mailing, in which they could return the ballots to the city clerk's office here at City Hall. The mailed ballots must be returned today by the conclusion of the public testimony this evening. At the conclusion of that testimony of the public hearing, the city clerk will then count the returned ballots and separate those in support and in opposition. If the weighted return ballots in support are more than fifty percent, exceed those returned in opposition, the City Council may then adopt a resolution of formation that levies the assessments on the benefiting parcels. The city then informs the county to the level of assessments on the next cycle of property taxes bills consistent with the amounts listed in the management district plan. At this time, the next step would be for the mayor to open the public hearing for public testimony. We would then close the public testimony, at which time that would be the last time that the public can submit a ballot, and they can return it to the city clerk. And immediately following that public testimony at the public hearing, the city clerk staff will then count the ballots in an area accessible by the public, which will be in the Management Services Conference Room, and at the conclusion of that, we will then have the tabulated votes, which will be read by the city clerk. So...
I open the public hearing.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I don't have any cards submitted on this item, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Clerk, will you attend to your responsibilities?
And he just reassessed this, this item?
We'll, we'll reassess this item for later when you come back.
We will.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to get back to the regular agenda, and we have a community announcement by Sally Pack. Ms. Pack? Hello?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing me present before you today. My name is Sally Pack, and I'm with the nonprofit youth organization called International Youth Fellowship. I'm previous years Mayor Paula Devine and Council Member Vartan Karpetian, uh, oh! Attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Grotius Music Foundation, and they were the first supporters of the Grotius Music Camp, which is a sister company of International Youth Fellowship. So, we could go ahead and show the video really quick. So, Roll, uh, Roll Camp is, well, I'm here today to personally invite the Mayor Sinanian as well as other council members here today to the Leadership Forum that will be happening August 15th, and it's at the Terrace Theater, which is the final day of the Roll Camp. The Roll Camp is a camp, a week-long camp held in Hilton Anaheim, and it's an annual camp to instill leadership within the students and also give them the tools necessary to live a happy life as they encounter difficulties. So, if there is a solution to teen suicide and assaults and, as well as cyberbullying, isolation, and drug abuse, and other issues that teens face today, this is it. I really encourage and hope that council members, as well as Mayor Sinanian, that you attend to really, it would mean a lot to the students and the youth. We, they really need prominent leaders such as you to be examples, and so that they may be influenced as well as inspired by you. So, I have given you brochures as well, and you will see them at your table. So, thank you for your time. I hope that you may collaborate with the youth.
Thank you, Ms. Pack. We'll add it to our calendars. And we're moving on to the three-minute portion of public comments, and we'll start with Diane Lewis, followed by John Bogjan. Diane Lewis.
Hello. Thank you for having me. I, my name is Diane, and I live in South Glendale, and I am concerned about the crowding and the traffic there. And so, I had heard that there were going to be twenty thou, twenty, twenty-eight thousand more people added, or units, or something. Is that something that's on the...
On the agenda.
On the agenda? Can, can we talk about it?
If you want to make your comments during that agenda item, you're more than welcome to submit another card and come back and speak about it at that time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah? Otherwise, you're, you know, this is your comment time. You can make your comments.
I'll be happy to talk about traffic, because that is an ongoing problem, traffic and noise in my neighborhood. I live on Verdugo and Garfield, and so Verdugo is, there's lots of speeding up and down there, and I would like to see more police officers who are able to patrol the area and keep some of that under control. And I, I don't know how much that's going on right now, but it does seem to be, it's been an ongoing problem for years, and it just never has gotten any better. I'd like to see some, some kind of control, traffic control measures, if it's possible, if anybody has been talking about something like that. And I would just also like to say that I wanted to congratulate the young, I don't know what they're called, like the young ambassadors or the trainees that you have.
Ambassadors.
One of the, a gentleman helped me find this room today, and he said he used to be one of them, and he was just so very nice. I was very impressed with that, and I think it's a wonderful program.
Thank you.
And also, I love our libraries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the item on the South Glendale Community Plan is item 9B.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. John Bogjan, followed by Mike Van Gorder.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Mayor Sinanian, equal number, city councils, city officials, and citizens. Finally, we have a full house. Ten months ago, I delivered a message to this panel after successfully finishing our first campaign of rent stabilization petition. Since then, the condition has been worsened. What is happening in Glendale, rent hikes is outrageous. Some places' rent went up six-hundred to eight-hundred, even more. Because of this, hundreds of city residents are forced to move out, the same people who voted you to this office. I simply call it economical rape of innocent people, families with children, elderly, and disabled. For no reason, not much renovation, rents has been skyrocketed, rocketed. This is unimaginable that this could happen in the United States of America. You have been elected to do one thing, to be good steward of all people, not only rich and famous, whom you bow down. I, as one of the spiritual leader of this city, I met a few... I met a few Jewish, Christian, and other faith leaders of GRLA, one of the brothers in vocation, Rich Gardner. Obviously, outrage is obvious. Even some owners, homeowners are worried about this situation. Today is the day of your decision, put rent stabilization petition on November ballot, or resign. If you cannot do the job, let others do it. And let 60% plus population of Glendale get out those dire conditions, because Glendale tenant life matters. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Folks, this is going to be an exceptionally long meeting today, very long. Because if you've seen the agenda, we have major items on this agenda. If we clap after every speech, we're gonna be here longer. Please. Let's move on with the comments, and next speaker is Mike Van Gorder, followed by Mike Mahmouyan.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Mike Van Gorder. I'm one of the founders of the Glendale Tenants Union. For context, a 90-year-old woman in the city just got a $1,400 rent increase. Last week's city council meeting was perhaps the most clearly we've seen this council for what it is. Councilmember Devine, you stopped everything to let renters know just how much you care about us. We're not second-class citizens to you. Mayor Sinanian immediately said, "They don't want to hear that you care. They want rent control." "Do you want rent control?" "I didn't say that," he replied. "I said I care." Councilmember Devine paying lip service to caring about us is as flimsy as the thoughts and prayers offered to victims of violence. It means nothing, and it is nothing. Councilmember Agajanian expressed how much he cares about rent hikes as high as $1,200 and proposed we dip into our emergency fund to build affordable units that might help us in three years. Mayor Sinanian said again, "They're talking about rent control. Do you support rent control?" To which he replied, "No, units might fall into disrepair." Councilmember Agajanian, units citywide are already in disrepair. In many cases, tenants cannot complain about basic safety concerns because specifically greedy landlords use repair as an excuse to jack up rents. Lack of rent control enables malicious negligence on the part of specifically greedy landlords. Our rent control ordinance would require upkeep to qualify for a rent increase. So, Councilmember Agajanian, while we do need more affordable housing to be built, we don't want you to use tomorrow's money today to possibly help the problem three years later, after hundreds or thousands of members of this community are displaced. We want this ordinance, which will protect both renters and responsible landlords today, not later. Councilmembers Garpetian and Najarian said silently during all this, which is understandable, particularly in Councilmember Najarian's case, as no one was joking about how many cars they own. "We look forward to working with you one day when you decide to invest your time and your care in the residents of Glendale and not the shape of its skyline." It's not this council lacks political courage, because they don't. But this council's political courage seems tied exclusively to the enrichment of mega-developers like Rick Caruso. You talk about the market as what's causing rent hikes, but the mom-and-pop landlords are getting bought out or are dying off. And Rick Caruso and his ilk are the market, and they sure as hell don't care about us. They don't care about the cities whose spirits and communities they drain for personal enrichment. Mr. Mayor, your first-day priority was the housing crisis. You understand what people are going through. And furthermore, you're prepared to act in a way that the rest of this council is not. This council seems only afraid of what happens today if it might impact luxury portfolios later. This council is never afraid of what happens today if it happens to the working class. All we ever hear is later. It's easy to worry about later when either way you'll be fine. Saying you care is easy. Showing you care is what the Glendale Tenants Union has been doing for the past year, volunteering, working, connecting to your city to make meaningful change. Act on our ordinance, and you will be celebrated. We will stay working on this issue until we get the rent control that we need or until the market robs us all of our homes. Tick tock.
Thank you. Haik Mahmouyan, followed by Joanna Linkhorst.
Good evening, folks. My name is Haik. I am also with Glendale Tenants Union. And as before, I will interpret some of key points in Armenian during my statement, as we have lots of Armenian speakers in the audience. You know that thousands, tens of thousands of people are hurting in Glendale. And they are hurting now, not tomorrow, not in a year, not in five years. They are hurting now. They are being displaced now. Their rents are being raised now. 60% of Glendale are renters. You know the stories, and you know it's everywhere. You cannot feign cluelessness. Last week, a few of you shared that you care for tenants. With all due respect, we don't need your feelings. Your feelings will not prevent our grandparents from being pushed to choose between food and rent money. I want to add to this also, because Armenian American Museum folks are here, cultural leaders are here. We talk about cultural preservation, and we allow half of our cultural core, the folks who actually are part, make up the gem, the desporic cultural gem that the Armenian community is in Glendale, to be pushed out. We cannot talk about culture and preservation of culture in this city if we're not taking policy decisions in order to actually protect more than half of representatives of that culture. We want your actions. We want you to put a temporary measure capping rent increases starting now, and then we want you to proceed to adopt a strong rent control and rent stabilization ordinance. Nothing, and I mean nothing, on your agenda is as important as adopting rent control now. I want to paraphrase a popular slogan from Armenia. We are the owners of our city. Because there is no more important agenda item on here, I would like to invite anyone in the audience who cares and wants to take action for preservation of our cultural core, Armenian cultural core, and tenants' rights in Armenia, in Glendale, to come out with us after the last comment in front of City Hall. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mahmouyan. Joanna Linkhorst?
Mayor, council members, staff, the Friends of Rock Haven would like to present to you on this last day of the exclusive negotiation agreement over the property at Rock Haven, a petition titled simply "Open Rock Haven to the Public." It's 58 pages with 1,260 signatures asking that the Rock Haven historic property be opened as a public park by any means possible. The number of signatures is growing as we sit here. And we thank you very much for you looking into this situation and handling of this public property. If you get an opportunity to look at this petition, it's kind of a kick to see. It's not just signatures from the Crescent Valley, not just signatures from Glendale, but signatures from Southern California, California, several other states, and even other countries. And that doesn't even include a signature from the gentleman who's come over from Paris Vogue to write an article on Rock Haven Sanitarium and its great history. We hope that as all of these considerations proceed, you will take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Linkhorst. That's the last card, and let's move on to the next item.
Item 7, adoption of ordinances, 7A. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, California, adopting the transactions and use tax to be administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, subject to adoption by the electorate.
Okay, and this item was introduced by Councilmember Najarian.
Obub 7A.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Thank you. Let's move on to the next item.
9A, Director of Community Development regarding Armenian American Museum and Cultural Center of California. One would be motion finding the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to Section 15332 of the state SEQA guidelines, urban infill. Two, motion approving the standard variance permitting the loading area to be partially located offside and adopting findings in support thereof. Three, motion approving stage-two design. Four, resolution approving a summary report pursuant to California Government Code, Section 52201, on the ground lease agreement by and between the city and the Armenian American Museum and Cultural Center of California for lease of certain city-owned property located in Central Park. Five, introduction of ordinance approving a ground lease agreement by and between the city of Glendale and the Armenian American Museum and Cultural Center of Glendale, of California.
Thank you, Ms. Veers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as Darlene Sanchez makes her way up to the podium, I just wanted to make some comments regarding some background. As you all know, we have been negotiating with the Armenian American Museum Committee, and conversation started in early March of 2016. And we've had a number of iterations with the committee, as well as the city council. And you've seen the stage-one design of the museum, as well as the Central Park design concepts, which were discussed a few months back before the city council. And we have spent the majority of the last few months having discussions with the Armenian American Museum Committee as it relates to the lease terms and negotiating those terms based on feedback that we've received from the city council and, of course, language that is always placed in there based on legalese. With that, I will have Darlene Sanchez give you some of the specifics on what is before you this evening and answer any questions that you may have.
Ms. Sanchez?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sinanian and council members. It cannot be overstated that the report before you represents a tremendous amount of work, hard work, and collaboration. From your vision as a city council, you united that vision with that of the museum board and collectively engaged the community. And the five actions before you this night is the culmination of these efforts. In your council packets, you'll find what staff believes are the necessary studies, findings, and agreements that support this project. You're being asked tonight to acknowledge and approve categorical exemptions of findings as part of the SEQA requirements. There is a variance request that will allow for a loading area. The final ground lease agreement is before you tonight, along with the state-mandated subsidy report. And finally, you're also being asked to approve the stage-two design submittals. If these items sound familiar, it's because tonight is a historic milestone that we have worked towards for many years. And as an integral part of this process, the community engagement component has been a cornerstone of this development. Over the years, we've had agendized this project on six separate council meetings, hosted and publicized two large-scale community outreach meetings. And this is in addition to the outreach done by the museum as well. So with that, we have negotiated a ground lease that leases out city-owned land for the development and operation of a museum. This museum would promote an understanding and appreciation of America's ethnic and cultural diversity by sharing the Armenian-American experience along with the experience of other cultural and ethnic groups in the United States with the public. In exchange, the city would lease out the land for a 55-year term. That includes four 10-year renewals at a dollar a year. Given the subsidy, the museum project would comply with applicable laws related to prevailing wages. So, with this project, it's structured into two phases. The first phase is a three-level stub-terranean parking garage with parking for the museum, which would be 262 vehicles. As part of this phase requirement, the tenant must first demonstrate that prior to the construction of this garage, they have secured 100% of the construction costs needed to build that parking. Once the garage is complete, we move to the second phase, which will be a three-story building that sits on top of the garage and is approximately 59,000 square feet. Prior to the construction of the museum building, the tenant will be required to secure at least 70% of the construction costs for the museum. The remaining 30% of that funding would be needed, that would be needed to construct the building would be secured in the form of a completion guarantee. And this would allow for the tenant to start the construction of the building component while continuing to secure that funding. Other provisions that are important components to the lease, and we just wanted to highlight, because it really just showed the uniqueness of this project. The public good component of what this museum brings has always been at the forefront of our discussions, in particular, the first-class nature of what this museum. We've outlined very specific uses of what first class is and those specific accessory uses associated with that first class. Things such as a gift shop, demonstration kitchen, auditorium, and other uses are all detailed out in the lease as permitted uses. This also translates to a requirement that this first class, for first-class management of the museum. Again, the lease details out experience, knowledge, skills, and at a level that would run a museum of this caliber. And finally, we have a commitment to remain good partners as we continue to work together to re-energize this block. We would be forming a committee with the city, between the city and the tenant. We'd meet on a quarterly basis, and we'd schedule events for Central Park block. So that really summarizes the larger points contained in the ground lease. The full ground lease is in your packet as Exhibit 3. Exhibit 4 to that shows the public benefit. This is, again, a state-mandated subsidy report. And what next, what I'm gonna bring forward next is Jay Platt. He's our city's senior urban designer. He's gonna discuss the design submittals and the variance request.
Good evening. Tonight, council is looking at the stage-two design review. In April, you reviewed the stage-one, and I'll make it easy for you because stage-two is more or less the same as stage-one. The design hasn't changed much. The drawings just have more detail and can answer more questions. So I'll keep this brief. We'll be introducing the architect when I'm finished, so he can answer specific questions once we're all done. If we move forward on the slides, you can, I'm sure you remember this design. It's very similar to what you saw last time. It's located in the southwest quadrant of Central Park. It's a large rectangular mass of metal-clad aluminum panels forming these kind of jagged openings and solid surfaces at the upper level. And then it's cut away at the bottom to be more welcoming and bring people into the building. The lower levels are clad with travertine stone and then also lots of glass. Underneath this is a three-level parking lot, as Darlene mentioned, and it occupies about 52,400 or so square feet of the Central Park area. Here are a few details about the cladding and the materials I mentioned. The glass at the base of the building is gonna be retractable so that the lobby of the museum space can open to the outdoors, so there's a lot of indoor-outdoor flexibility in terms of the events and programming that they use for the space. The stage-one was approved, as I mentioned, in April. And basically, we're asking you to approve stage-two because it is the design that you've already looked at and the design that you've already given us to go ahead to move forward with. Darlene mentioned that there's a variance associated with this. It's the only variance for this project, and it relates to the loading dock. There were two options for the loading dock. It could have either been on Colorado, which would be obviously very inappropriate because it would cause traffic problems and all sorts of other issues. The building is, on the west side of the building, it fronts the alley just east of Bran Boulevard, behind the Masonic Temple and the Shake Shack Building. The loading dock will be on this west side, so it will be accessed from the alley. Part of it will be on the private property that becomes part of the, or the property that becomes part of the museum, but part of it will also have to span across from the museum to the alleyway. So it will take up a little bit of sidewalk, a little bit of the land area before the museum, and also cause removal of two to three parking spaces. But we have looked at this. It's the best location for the loading dock, and we can make the findings to support the variance, and we recommend that city council approve the variance for this crossing over from the museum to the public way. And finally, this project needs to be assessed for any environmental impacts it would have. Staff has reviewed the entire project, looked at possible impacts, and finds that it's eligible for what's called a categorical exemption from SEQA as an infill project. It meets the four findings that are necessary for this kind of determination. Exhibit 2 in your package gives you more details about that. We can also answer questions if you have them when we're all finished. And except for that, that's everything that I have for you. Darlene and I will be available for questions, but before that, we wanted to ask Aram Malajaji, the architect for the project... the architect for the project, to come up and he can discuss the details of this better than anyone. So, thank you.
Mr. Alajajan, how much time do you need?
Probably like three minutes.
You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff. Thank you for considering this project. This is a historic project for city of Glendale or in Los Angeles at large. You know, this museum is a very important component of arts and culture that is going to add to, for our community. Just briefly, want to go through the plans. As you remember at the stage one presentation, the shaded area where the footprint of the first floor sits on the ground at the corner of alley and the Colorado Boulevard. Next slide is the site plan. You're looking at the roof plan where majority of those roof panels are made of solar panels. They're basically, the, the building will be energized by the solar panels. It will be self-sustaining building as far as the energy is concerned. We have three levels of subterranean parking where we're going to be parking like 262 parking spaces. If you go by the code, 240 required, we're providing 22 more parking spaces here. The first floor will accommodate car chargers for electrical car. It will accommodate also bicycle parking and the ground-level parking. And obviously, the very low level also will have a storage which will be used by the, by the museum, underground area. Now, the first floor, basically, the elements would go, or users will go on the first floor will be mainly the auditorium. And we'll have stage with the auditorium and backup facilities to, for the dressing rooms, for the performances and so forth. This is mainly theaters for the performances, lectures, movie screening. We will have exits coming out of the second and third floor. We have an elevator located at the central location, which would be the main elevator coming up to the, from the, from this first floor up to the second and third floor, you know, bringing the guests to the museum floor and to the demonstration kitchen area. Now, the, the second, I mean, we have a mezzanine which is basically technical and the mechanical floor, and above that is the main museum floor. So the, the entire exhibition is pushed up to the second floor, which would be illuminated by the central skylight in the center and with the narrow-sided glasses on the side. On the third floor, amenities will, you know, will, will have demonstration kitchen and will have a learning center which will be facing the open garden, rooftop garden. And we have archives, administrative offices, and a cold room. We have a staff elevator also that serves all three floors and freight elevators which will come up from the, to serve you. This is now, we're looking at the building elevations, looking from the east and looking from the south, and more elevations looking from the north and west. This would be giving you the sections coming through the Colorado Boulevard, a cross-section, showing the parking structures, you know, openness of the ground floor and the museum levels, and the skylight is in the center. This is section through the auditorium just for the technical purposes if you have any questions on those. Now, you were looking at the building elevations, building massing, as Mr. Platt has explained. This is form of very artistic forming as a sculpture by itself. It's going to be very iconic building. The ground floor is basically cladded with a travertine stone slabs of two and a half feet by five feet. And above, materials that you, you can see, it's mainly a composite material. I do have a sample here if you're interested to see it. So there are different views. This is the main entry to the lobby area, and we're looking at the, looking from the park area entrance coming from the library side to the building. This is the main exhibition floor. And we're looking at the rooftop garden and also cafeteria at the ground level, which has a terrace opening and overviewing the Colorado Boulevard. Now, this is the lighting diagram of the, of the project. So all those elements that are coming together, the illumination would be done by those elements by itself. So with the night shot that you saw a minute ago, it illustrated that. So all the rock formation elements will have illumination, LED lighting in between those elements. So it would be lit up, the entire building would be lit up like that. So we're also, we're lightening the terrace itself, and we put up, the signage would be very contained, would be one at the Colorado side and one at the library side. Those are some details that I wanted to emphasize. The far-left corner is the cladding of the material that you can see. They're not simply cladded on the wall. They're basically hang, dry hang method, and they're also caught in a 45 degrees where those slabs are coming together. And some of those gaps that you see in between, there would be illuminated at night too. So it's not just simply cladding the building at the base level. This would be very artistically done. And the glass element is basically containing the entire first floor, the lobby area. As the center below, you see the stair, main staircase design that is a combination of ramps and the staircases that leads you to the Colorado, from Colorado to the main building. Now, we also put up some landscaping drawings there. We have a water element that is on the, would, would be on the north side of it, under the building canopy that will provide nice climate for the, in the hot days, you know. And also, we have a garden, symbolic garden on the Colorado side, which you see it, two equal squares on a north and south side of it. And plant-type materials are specified on the packet. Now, this is the garden, actually, will be also the terrace garden would be heavily landscaped with potted trees. That's, that's my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer you.
All right. You went a little bit over three minutes.
All right?
That's okay.
Sorry.
A little bit. But, okay, we'll move on to the next speaker. Actually, I want a couple of questions. Open the public hearing, and you want to, you want to ask questions to the?
From, yeah, Mr. Alajajan. I said Alajajan. Quick question on the temporary exhibition hall?
Yes.
I see you have this big atrium or the skylight. How big is that thing? Because, there was no dimensions on it. It's a pretty large, because that's what brings light to the first, third floor, second floor, and the, all the way down to the, to the first floor, right? And the temporary exhibition hall, because I see those, because of the exterior of the building, the windows are pretty narrow. Is it done by design that it's kind of like darker than the other side and can have different exhibitions?
Not specifically the, the interiors of the, of the museums are not designed. It's depend on the program, type of program that is going to come to the museum, especially for the temporary museums, if you're exhibiting immersive shows or if you're really displaying art, that would be, that would be the difference. So the interiors are not designed, the partitions and so forth. But, you know, normally, the museums, and it's not illustrated here, the, the floor looks open, but there would be corridors on each side of it, a similar size of, that you're looking between that supporting wall and a, and a bridge walkway on, on either side of the left and right side of the temporary and the permanent museum that will allow center corridor going through around the skylight area, but the rest would be like a display area. So it's not illustrated here.
Right, right. No, I was, I was just, I was just curious about the temporary exhibition hall because the windows are?
Narrow.
Narrow and, okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Alajajan?
No, I'm not.
Yes, Mr. Alajajan? What's the size of the improvement, the building?
The total building is 59,800, I believe, somewhere around there. Under 60,000, just a little under 60,000.
Okay. There appear to be no other questions for you for now.
Thank you.
And I'm going to invite Steve Hunt. How much time do you need, Mr. Hunt?
Just three minutes.
Like his three minutes or your three minutes?
Mine. Well, measure me.
Okay, let's make it four.
Mayor Sinanian, council members, staff. My name is Steve Hunt. I'm representing the Glendale Historical Society, and we're here in support of the Armenian American Museum. And I'd just like to read into the record the letter that was sent to the council members recently by Greg Grammer, our president. It says, "Dear Mayor Sinanian and members of the City Council, the Glendale Historical Society appreciates this opportunity to express our support for the Armenian American Museum and Cultural Center of California. Established in 1979, the nonprofit organization has more than 700 members and works to preserve and celebrate Glendale's rich history and remaining architectural heritage. We are pleased to witness the arrival of new cultural institutions in Glendale, and we embrace the addition of the Armenian American Museum because the American, the Armenian American experience is an inextricable part of Glendale and vice versa. The history of our city simply cannot be understood or told without taking the many contributions of the Armenian American community into account. Museum committee members have reached out to the Glendale Historical Society, and we look forward to collaborating on future projects. The Glendale Historical Society also congratulates the architect of the museum's bold and innovative design, and we welcome the museum as one of our future gems of the jewel city. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Greg Grammer."
Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
How'd I do on the time?
You're, you're amazing. I think you have three more minutes in excess.
I'll walk slowly back. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move on to the next speaker, Aliq Boyajian.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian and council members. My name is Aliq Boyajian. I'm an intern with the Office of Senator Anthony Portantino. On behalf of Senator Portantino, I wanted to share support for the actions being taken tonight to advance the Armenian American Museum and Cultural Center project. Congratulations and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Any other cards? Is this the last one?
That's the last one.
Okay, we have one more speaker, Berch Karapetian. How much time do you need?
I'll try to do it under three, but I hope I won't be, Mr. Alajajan.
Let me say four minutes. Sure.
Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager, this has been a very long journey for all of us. We started in 2014, as Darlene Sanchez pointed out, and several public hearings. This is the second location that we are exploring for the museum. We appreciate the City Council in April of 2018 approving the main business terms related to this museum and the design stage one. Following the design stage one approval, negotiations on the ground lease started in May. They took many hours, a lot of back and forth, and some good guidance from you at, in closed sessions to, to the negotiators. We came to a position where a lot of compromises were made from both sides, but compromises that we feel have made the ground lease agreement in the version that is in front of you, a better document that will help all of us achieve a museum, a cultural center, that will really be something that will make the city of Glendale proud. If you approve the, today's motions and introduce the ordinance, we will together embark on the next phase of this important journey. A vision that will, that will enrich the community, educate the public on the Armenian American story, and empower individuals to embrace cultural diversity and speak out against prejudice. The Armenian American Museum and Cultural Center will be a cultural campus that honors our past, recognizes our present, and builds our future. The inception of this project was at, on the occasion of the 100th anniversary of the Armenian genocide by 19 organizations from the community. The 19 organizations entrusted the work to 10 organizations. Our bylaws are based on those 10 organizations, and we will be moving forward to include a larger collaboration and participation by a large public that is not limited to just the Armenian American public of our city. So with your help, with your participation, we will reach the point where we will open the doors of this cultural center for our city. We thank you. We thank you, and please, let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karapetian, and we have no more speaker cards. I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll start with Councilman Najarian.
I, I've always liked the design. I'm thrilled about having a museum, an Armenian museum in Glendale. My support for this project was firmly based in the fact that the governance and the operation and the management is going to be shared by the different Armenian political parties, cultural organizations, and churches. For those that don't know, the Armenian community is not monolithic. We've got many threads in our fabric of being an Armenian community. So one thing we didn't know is the exact makeup of your board, if that is mandated that members of those different threads that make up the fabric are required to be board members. That's something that we just, we were so focused, I think, on the details of the, the lease that that didn't come up. It's my hope and my desire that, that if it is not so detailed in your bylaws, that those bylaws be amended to reflect a continuing multi-party involvement in the operation and governance of the museum. So that's something that I'm sure can be handled quickly with our city attorney. The other thing that came into my mind is, and we've had a brief discussion of that, I'm not disclosing closed session, if it's my own thought, is that the council be given an option, we have made no decision yet, but we given the, be given the option to place one of our members on the board, either as an ex officio or otherwise, to sit on the board by determination at some date. We have not decided, yes, we definitely want a seat. We haven't decided if we want that seat, whether it will be the mayor or another appointee, but that's something I wanted to throw out to you. After all, we are the elected members. We've been elected by members of the community, and there would be no better way for us to feel that we're part of the museum than to have a seat on that board. And I know this is a last-minute surprise perhaps, but it's something that, that's important to me. I can't say that every member of council is supporting that. We haven't come to that. That's why I would consider placing the option upon council's desire there be a place available on the board for someone from the City Council. So I don't know if you can answer that now. I think that that may be something in the next few days that, that you can address. I imagine you, you do have a board that you'll have to run that by and, and get some approval, unless you have authority already, but those are my...
I'm going to reopen, I'm going to reopen the hearing, and while we have Mr. Karapetian out here, maybe if we have questions, we can ask him instead.
So I understand, I'm not asking you for the answer now. I don't think that's fair, but, but that's a subject in the next day or two that perhaps can be discussed with the city attorney, and then they would come back to council. And if council so desires, and let me be clear, council has not expressed such a desire, but it'd be something I would be interested in.
Mr. Najarian, the governing, I mean, the bylaws of the organization, it's a 501(c)(3), spells out clearly the name of the 10 organizations that are the board of trustees of the organization. I'll be happy to read to you the organization names, but the Armenian Catholic Aparchy, Armenian Cultural Foundation, Armenian Evangelical Union of North America, Armenian General Benevolent Union, Western District, Armenian Missionary Association of America, Armenian Relief Society, Western USA, Noror Charitable Foundation, North Serent Cultural Association, Western Diocese of the Armenian Church of North America, Western Prelacy of the Armenian Apostolic Church. That's in our bylaws. The only way that can change if a two-thirds majority and through a fairly lengthy process goes through making amendments to the bylaws. As for the second point, if that is the wish and desire direction of the City Council, we will be happy to entertain the suggestion and take it to our board. we will be happy to entertain the suggestion and take it to our board. We have a board meeting next week, I mean tomorrow, and we will be, would love to address it and respond as quickly as we can to your suggestion. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Thank you. Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Karpetian.
Why is it that nonprofit organization, Armenian nonprofit organization, which they have been here for such a long time, and I've been associated with some, are not considered part of this group?
The governing board is currently going through a process of looking at ways of expanding and possibly creating a board of directors that would be a much broader composition of individuals who don't necessarily represent organizations as well as individuals that represent organizations that are not on the board of trustees to be responsible for the governance and direction of the organization and the museum and cultural center as it is being developed and later on to remain the board of directors. Most museum and cultural centers have a board of trustees and have a board of directors. The board of directors is more responsible on the management and operational type of questions that come up. The board of trustees says the overall direction. So those questions are in front of the governing board at the present time.
Ms. Devine?
Yes, Mr. Karpetian, thank you for including in your remarks the fact that you would, you're looking forward to a collaborative effort to have a diverse board. When you talk about maybe this, I don't know if it's the board of directors, this would be made up of different volunteers, let's say, from the community, some of non-Armenian descent, so that it is, it exemplifies the diversity of our community?
Yes. Our hope is the board of directors will be a board of directors that will see its composition change from time to time. Usually, board of directors are bodies that are the ones that play an essential role in the fundraising as well as the management of the body, and we believe that in order for us to be successful, we will have to encompass a large spectrum of our city in the process.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Karpetian. I'm still going to leave the public hearing open. Mr. Karpetian? Okay, Mr. Najarian, would you like to go next?
I'm sorry?
Would you like to go next?
About what?
About this item.
About this item?
Someone has to go ask.
I just, I had this impression that we are approving portion of it, item one, two, three.
So there's a design, there's a design, there's the variance, there's the public benefit report, and then there's the introduction of the ordinance approving the lease, which would come back in two weeks. If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Mayor, for approval.
That's correct. That's correct.
For final...
That's right, Mr. Najarian. Mr. Najarian, would you like me to go with Councilmember Devine first? Ask her.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to start by thanking the many people who, for the past several years, have been working on this project, trying to make the Armenian American Museum and Cultural Center a reality. Under the leadership of the officers of the museum committee, who are here tonight, Berch Karpetian from the museum negotiating team, and Jillian Van Miden, who is not here, and Mr. Landsafame, who, from the city attorney's office and the community development department, as a result of the vision, the work of these two outstanding architects, Mr. Alajian and Markusi, we have reached a point tonight where a historic decision is going to be made. Mr. Karpetian, it's funny that you mentioned that those first meetings and how you faced, in the public outreach meetings, you faced very, very vociferous residents, and I have to say that you handled those meetings with class and with, you were a gentleman all the way, answered all of their questions. And of course, then it came to moving the museum to a different location, and, you know, through a lot of consideration, understanding, flexibility, compromise, we moved it to Central Park. Tonight, the planning and negotiations have been successfully completed, and we have before us these three, these three motions, a resolution, and an introduction. These are going to provide us, if the council recommends, approves, a landmark and an icon in Glendale that will provide the ultimate Armenian American history, arts, culture, and diversity museum. With that said, upon the completion of comments from my colleagues, I would be proud, Mr. Mayor, to be the one that moves the three motions, the resolution, the ordinance, all of the above. I'm so happy that we finally reached this moment. I'm proud of all of you that worked on this. I'm proud of the city council who labored with staff, and staff, thank you so much because I know you put hours and hours into this to come to this point, and so it is a happy evening. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Devine. Mr. Karpetian?
Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, indeed, this is a historic moment for all of us, for our community at large, and I want to thank everyone for being here for many years of hard work. I was one of the original members of this board when it was formed in the beginning, and I know how difficult this is to go from one location to another, hold community meetings, try to answer everybody's questions, and be fair and not, stay on course, basically, because it's very easy to get distracted when you get these curveballs coming at the different angles. But overall, I was looking at the design again. I want to, I want to compliment Mr. Alajian and Mr. Markusi on this design. You mentioned something that you haven't mentioned before. This is like a sculpture itself. I mean, the building, when you look at it, is a different sculpture. I am for all the items that is on the agenda, the variance for the parking, introducing the ordinance, all this is on, the design, stage two, and the public benefit to be moved forward. As far as Councilmember Najarian's questions or suggestions, I think that could be ironed out in next, because this item is coming back in two weeks. It could be all addressed by the, it would give you a chance to look at it and voice your opinion on that. This is indeed a historic moment. I'm really, I'll obviously say this, I'm proud to be part of it, and I will second the motion later on.
Thank you. Mr. Najarian?
I just have, so I was very encouraged by Mr. Karpetian's remarks, that he also and the members of the committee support that broad-based governance. I do want to, I do want to give, I guess, some flexibility to the, to the committee. I don't want to say that that's the 10 groups that have to be there forever, but if any change or substitution of one group for another is made, that somehow that be run by the city council and that we will not withhold approval capriciously, that there be, you know, if one of the groups perhaps peters out or show no interest, and there's another that would like to replace them, whether it's affiliated or not, that you be given that flexibility, and so long as we make sure that we'll be, you know, like the referee, making sure everything is still the way we want, because I think that's important. Look, I really think that's important to its success. We all know that if, if this were one organization's museum, we wouldn't have gotten anywhere close to where we are today. And your success in reaching this milestone is the great collaboration between all the community groups, and that's not an easy thing. We do the genocide commemoration, and we have a very small group of people for a very small purpose, and it's not always easy to get the end results, but it is, I think, a tribute to the commitment, patience, and cooperative spirit of all the groups that you have on your board to get you this far. So there's a lesson, I think, to be learned, perhaps not just for the museum, but for the Armenian people in general, like the Minister of the Diaspora mentioned yesterday at his remarks, that it's through the collaboration and cooperation that we'll achieve success. So that's my, that's my only suggestion, and the city attorney will work that out with any details.
Mr. Najarian?
I would like to congratulate each and every one of you and those who worked on this project and all those organizations which are part of this group. You know, I used to make comments every night for one hour, so I want you to relax and listen to what I'm going to say, which will take you guys an hour, but since I have the chance to express myself on TV, I will make it short and congratulate all of you, and I will talk about this project on TV station, so I will let you guys to express yourself. Thank you.
Wait, we have to watch you on TV to hear your remarks? Come on!
That's better.
Give us a preview!
That's better. I can show all the pictures and define all the aspects of the project.
But I object because I don't understand you when you're on TV.
I will translate it.
Speak in all Armenia, so, speak in English.
Okay, I guess I'm the only one who's left. I do also want to join my colleagues in thanking everyone that's been involved with this process. It truly is an important endeavor that we're, we're not starting really, we're, you know, we're somewhere in the middle, I think, at this point as a city, because finally, we'll be getting a premium museum in our city, something that, for example, our neighboring city of Pasadena has several of, and I think that's going to enrich our city. It's going to enrich all the communities that live here, and it's something to be excited about. So I think everyone was thanked. I don't want to go through the same list again. I'm not sure if the Glendale Historical Society was thanked. I want to thank them specifically for coming out in support of this. I, I mean, there's, I guess there's a kind of a motion or not a motion yet, there will be a motion once I'm done speaking, but I'm in support of the motions, the resolution, and the ordinance as stated by staff. It's a product of a long, long process, throughout which council has been involved, has given direction to staff, has had ample opportunity to present their concerns, their needs, their requirements, and I think they've done a pretty good job throughout the last year and a half, two years, and it's time to put this to a vote. So if you'll...
If, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would just suggest that the items...
You can go one by one?
You can take one, two, three, and four at the same time.
Let's take one, one, two, three, and four at the same time.
I will move nine, eight, one through four.
I'm sorry. Then what happens? One, two, three, four?
So that's the finding that the project is exempt, approving the standards variance, approving the design review, and then approving the summary report pursuant to California Government Code, Section 52201, and then we'll talk about the ordinance after that.
So I moved item nine A, one through four.
Second.
May we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Najarian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Karpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinayan? Yes.
And I will move, or, I'm sorry, introduce the ordinance.
Introduce the ordinance, and with the additional comments about the three items that Councilmember Najarian asked us to look into, work with the committee for the final terms of the lease.
So moved.
So the ordinance has been introduced, Mr. Mayor.
I'll introduce the ordinance, I'm sorry, yeah. Second, we need a second.
No, not an ordinance, but so we moved B, one, two, three, and four, but five and six are still there.
I'm sorry, did I read that? I was just looking at the agenda.
No, one through four, and then the introduction of the ordinance.
It was A, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Nine A, one through four.
Okay, yes, sir, you're right. Okay, we're done with this item. Thank you. And we're going to go back to agenda item nine C because the votes have been...
The votes are in.
Yeah, the votes are in, and they've been tallied, so we'll invite, who are we inviting back?
Jennifer?
Jennifer Hiromoto? Oh, there you are. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Aram, our clerk, will read the results into the record.
We're timed already.
Mayor and mayor members of council, the following, following the public input portion of the public hearing, all assessment ballots that had been returned to the city were tabulated pursuant to the resolution of intent. Seventy-eight point four seven percent are in support. Based on the tabulation, it has been determined that a majority protest does not exist with respect to the assessment proposed in connection with the Greater Downtown Business District. As such, the next step in the process would be, would be city council consideration of adoption of the resolution of formation of the Greater Downtown Glendale Benefit District.
Excuse me?
Okay, yes, sir.
Seventy percent, they are in favor of it?
In support. Seventy-eight point four seven in support.
Seventy-eight point four seven, okay. How about we have people who are against it?
Yes.
Opposed?
The percentage was twenty-one point five three opposition.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, can we continue to put this item on hold while I confer with the clerk's office?
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's put this on hold.
No, nothing like that.
Okay, let's put this on hold. We're going to move on to the next item then. Okay, item number nine B.
Director of Community Development Regarding South Glendale Community Plan, Including Final Environmental Impact Report, SCH Number 2016091026, South Glendale Community Plan, PGPA 1220635, Land Use Text Amendment, PGPA 1800445, Circulation Element Text Amendment, PGPA 1800447, Downtown Specific Plan Amendment, PGPA 1800444, Land Use Element Map Amendment, PGPA 1800448, and Zoning Map Amendment, PZC 1800449, B1 Resolution Certifying Final Environmental Impact Report and Adopting a Statement of Overriding Considerations for FEIR Alternative Two, Resolution Adopting Tropical Center Plan as Amended, Three, Motion Initiating Preparation of TODS Zone for the Tropical TODS Center, Four, Directing Staff to Modify the South Glendale Community Plan, PGPA 1220635, Five, Motion Directing Staff to Modify the Land Use Element Text and Map Amendments to Match South Glendale Community Plan Modifications, Six, Resolution to amend Land Use Element Map relating to the Six C3 Three Parcels, PGPA 1800448, Seven, Introduction of Ordinance to amend zoning map related to the Six C3 Three Parcels, PZC 1800449, and I do have 14 cards. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. Ms. Veers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm going to go directly to Mr. Landsafame to give you the background and information on this entire process. Mr. Landsafame?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I just want to make some introductory remarks. I'll give you a little spoiler alert. I'll tell you when we're going to, I'm going to jump to something, the end of the story in my introductory comments, and then call up staff to walk through the plan. But I do want to give some introductory comments. Why are we doing this plan? What is its purpose? It really is a method for informing our general plan. It puts policy behind our zoning that is currently in place. It tells people, and both developers as well as staff, how things should be developed in the future. So it is an important document. It also combines... It also combines past studies, some thirty studies over the last forty years in this area into one document, so that they're all together, and, and these are policies that we use in, in our land management. The, the plan creates a vision for each neighborhood. We have broken it down into several different neighborhoods, and gives you a snapshot and tells you how that neighborhood should be developed. And those visions are arrived at through your direction, through that of the community, and, and we put it into one area so that everybody knows what we want to do. It really is a statement of how we wanna grow. It's used in grant applications. It's used for regional land planning by SCAG, as well as regional transit planning, so they, everybody knows this is how Glendale is anticipating growing out over the next twenty-five or so years. And this, this starts to spoil us, I want to tell you that this is a vision document. It does not approve any projects. It doesn't implement. It is a vision document. If we want to go through with some of these visions, there are many actions that need to take place by the city council. This works in concert with our North Glendale Plan. Eventually, we'll have an East-West Plan, and so you'll have a community plan covering four parts of the city. Again, this will inform our general plan, which is our overriding land use regulation for the city. We have, we have, through discussion with the city council, we have prepared an environmental impact report. The project that we studied is a project that, that proposes some development over that period of time, those twenty-five years, and it, it asks for it to come in over different periods after transit is in place. That document is an information document for you, the policymaker. It doesn't approve projects. In fact, any project that would come forward would have to do its own environmental review to see, one, is it consistent with that, and if not, what other things need to happen before a project could take place. It tells you, this is what would happen if, the impacts that, I should say that, it, to give you some context, if we did nothing, there would be similar impacts as what we studied in the project. With that environmental review and the study of that project, we also have several alternatives there, and they are of lesser degree of development. One in particular is what we call environmentally superior, or environmentally preferred. The last comment that I wanna make before staff gets into their, their presentation is that we studied many things in this plan, and this was the, if everything were to happen, this would, these would be the impacts. Some things like we were going to adjust boundaries of the, the downtown specific plan to pick up some twenty properties. We studied that, however, the council has since given us direction, don't include those. And so there is not an action for you for that specific boundary change. The last thing I will say is, is with that, with the growth that we looked at in the project, it contemplated some ten thousand new units and, and two or three million square feet of commercial. If we do nothing, we are still going to grow, to some the extent of maybe twenty-five hundred units over the next twenty-five years. What we found in going out to the community is some concern that we really hadn't fleshed out what it means to add or take away densities in different parts of the city. We heard some of that concern from the council as we discussed this project. So here's the spoiler alert. In our recommendation, one of our recommendations is that we ask you, staff, we're recommending that you, the city council, as one of your actions, direct us to take those density changes out of this document, and go back to the community, go back to the planning commission, go back to the council, study that further, and bring those pieces back at another time. The plan is still important because it has the policies behind what i- is included in our zoning, so we don't want it to discard the entire plan. So with that, again, we're, we're going, you're gonna hear that a lot tonight, we wanna make sure that everybody, council and the community, is clear on what we're recommending. So with that, I want to introduce Bradley Calvert, our new Assistant Director of Community Development for Planning, to start the report. We'll have several staff members, and then we've got the entire team here.
Before Mr. Calvert starts... Mr. Landsafame, thank you for that introduction. I just wanna make one thing perfectly clear. You said that this plan does not approve any projects, and any, any steps towards creating those projects would take council action.
That's correct.
That council action includes in it public hearings, public output, and public outreach.
That is correct.
So it's not that we're gonna sit behind closed doors and decide that we're gonna have this project. It's still a whole process, in the event we decide to go forward with any particular project in this region.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to make that.
Thank you. Mr. Calvert?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and council members. I am pleased to be here before you tonight to present the South Glendale Community Plan. I'm gonna go through the first few slides here really quick, as Mr. Landsafame covered a number of things already, but as you saw, there's a list of things that we're asking for tonight or recommending in terms of resolutions and action items. These are pivotal and important for us to be able to move forward with the plan and begin to study additionally, and as, as one council member noted, for us to be able to continue with our public outreach. So I won't run through each of these individually, as you've already heard them, and we're also going to recap them here at the end of the presentation as well. But as referenced, we are not adopting any specific policy here. Where we are, we are still in the planning phases, and from, and while a lot of work has been done prior to this, obviously, years and months of time have been invested leading up to this point, the first year on the timeline, there's still more studying that needs to occur. We still need to do more community outreach, we still need to come back to planning commission and council. And even from there, we still have to craft the actual policy, and then we would see projects actually on the ground. So there's still a number of steps to go through before we actually create policy, but we're still in planning right now and study. Just as a reference, the community area plan, it's bound, bound to the north by 134, San Fernando to the west, and it kinda jogs from the south and east between San, excuse me, Adams Hill and the Glendale Freeway. A little bit of background, this has been partially or fully funded by the Metro, Metro Grant. This is important because for us to complete the obligations of the grant, we do need to certify the EIR. This would include the adoption of the Tropical Center Plan for Transit-Orient Development, and for us to prepare the TOD, TOD zoning for Tropical Center. As mentioned earlier, this will guide neighborhood and district growth to 2040. It allows us to look back at those plans from decades before, compile them into one vision document. And it also expands those TOD policies throughout South Glendale. Council identified through the, for the project, and the three alternatives, including a no action as part of this, that was done back in June to August of 2016. We conducted our scoping and outreach through the fall of 2016, and continued outreach through city events in twenty, in 2017. There was a sixty-day public review of the DEIR that occurred between January and March, and we continued board and commission outreach, including planning commission and transportation. The comments to the DEIR had to be completed by June of, response to these comments were completed by June of 2018. So this pro, the, the project here is outlined by essentially a tiered system of maintain, enhance, and transform based on council direction. So these light yellow areas were areas that we intended to maintain, including residential densities. The orange areas, you can see along the corridors, as we'll describe in a, in a little bit, was to enhance, and then to transform, which included downtown, which has already been accomplished, and ultimately Tropical TOD. Some of the project items that were looked at as part of this planning initiative, obviously the final environmental impact report, the South, the South Glendale Community Plan, which we're here for tonight, there's also land use and circulation elements, amendments that need to occur, the Tropical Study, and there's also an affordable housing overlay. And as you had heard mentioned before, there are elements that were conducted as part of this study that we are not putting forth for recommendations this evening, and that includes the expansion of the downtown boundary. And as mentioned before, there are six parcels within downtown that would, that we would consider zoning changes for. This is for a policy direction only. We would not be adopting land use policy this evening or zoning. If there is support for the South Glendale policies, and as we'll cover in just a moment, the centers, the corridors, the neighborhoods, and the districts elements, it would then lead us to amending the land use element to establish those uses as part of our general plan. Separate actions are still necessary to, to move forward with this. This is not something that we would be approving policy this evening for. Some of the goals of the South Glendale Community Plan, Transit-Orient Development was key with Tropical, to maintain neighborhood character, improve opportunities for open space and parks, economic development, and for infill housing and development. Mobility was also a key element, to create pedestrian-friendly streets that were walkable and safe, multimodal transportation, so not just prioritizing a pedestrian or cyclist, but including all modes of transportation, which include transit and automobiles, transit-adjacent housing, streetscape elements, and also expanding the, the services and the amenities for transit users. As we zero in just a little bit more, there's the Tropical TOD, and this is an opportunity for us to create a memorable, memorable gateway, as this will be an arrival point for many visitors to the city, the creation of affordable housing to support the existing medical services that are there, and to improve opportunities for open space and linear parks. Now, a little clarification on the TOD for Tropical, there is a small area, it actually disappears on the screen, my apologies, that would look for an increase in height and density, up to two-hundred feet potentially. The balance of the study area is what we would consider TOD 1, which would stay roughly the same as, as the existing kinda height and density that occurs now.
Before you go on, Bradley, I'm just to, just to note, that area that we talked about, TOD 2, I think, where you go up to two-hundred feet, that really is to accommodate the necessary expansion and, and upgrade of the hospital. That area would be confined to the hospital campus, and not necessarily the others, which are in TOD 1, I think, which, for all intents and purposes, maintains its existing zoning.
And so the rest of Tropical will maintain the height and density that it is right now? Nothing will, there's no changes there?
Correct. I, I, one caveat, there's a couple of parcels that are zoned, I think C3, that would have a, a small bump in density. They are currently developed with a pharmacy, and we don't anticipate that to turn over, but that would make it consistent with the rest of the TOD zone, which will have a new zoning designation, something we would need to come back to you for, but it would, when we come back, it would be at the same densities as there are today.
So the South Glendale Community Plan, the document is composed of six chapters, chapters, and an appendix. The important elements of this is chapter four, which really explains the places that we are trying to create, and that comes by way of centers, corridors, neighborhoods, and districts. So what I'd like to do now is turn this over to our urban designer, Christina Agardi, and she will explain the principles behind these.
South Glendale is a mix of neighborhoods, neighborhoods serving businesses, and Transit-Orient Boulevard centered around the downtown. As you can see by looking at the land use map, it, there's an enormous variety in the num, and number of uses. Chapter four, Places, is where we provide the vision for the future for all of these places, and it can be very overwhelming when you just look at the document. So to provide a sense of clarity and organization, the chapter was divided into the four sections that Bradley mentioned. Centers represent development that orient's outwards from a single use or a cluster of uses. Corridors are a linear development pattern, such as a transit corridor or a main street. Neighborhoods, which are the lan, largest land use in South Glendale, are rather self, self-explanatory. And then we have districts, which are specialized land use areas, such as civic areas where we are this evening, cemeteries, open space, transportation corridors. Looking at one of these sections to give you a little more in-depth understanding of how the, each section is organized, we'll use centers. A definition of centers is provided, and then the different land use designations or types of centers that we identified are given. In this case, we have the downtown, an urban center, town center, and a village center. They're, they're in descending order from the highest density and height to the lowest density, and the, the character image that's associated with them gives you a visual sense of the character and scale, and, and the type of street character that you might have for that respective center. And then on the left, you have a map of the South Glendale area that shows the distribution of those centers by land use designation. Looking at the village center, the lowest density, on each, for each land use designation, there is a page such as this, which gives you, in the upper left-hand corner, a color coding of the land use designation color, the zoning designation, the density, and the allowable height. There is a description of what a village center is, typical characteristics of a village center, and then on the left-hand, or on the right-hand side, there's a graphic illustration of a village center. In this case, you can see the small cluster of businesses that are surrounded by the neighborhood. So you have the neighborhood-serving retail, commercial uses with the neighborhood around. And then you have images, again, that tie back to that diagram, that give you a sense of the character, features, scale, and the quality of that particular land use. Following that would be the identified places that are, in this case, a village center. We have Adam Square. We give a description of what Adam Square is like today. We show a boundary map that has special features included, such as bikeways, historic properties, bus stops, transit amenities. And then on the right-hand side, there's a photo taken of a, a certain location, and that before photo is then used to illustrate the vision for the future. Below that is a description. The first thing that's in there is the maintain, enhance, transform designation, and then a, a brief description of what that vision is for the future. In, with village center, centers, we have two for South Glendale, the Adam Square and Columbus School, and Columbus School would offer the same type of information. Then they're followed, those pages are followed by the design guidelines. First are recommendations for public improvements to improve the character and safety of the streets and the public right of way. And then following that will be the design guidelines that, there are three topics that are covered. They include the site planning, mass and scale, design and detailing, that are the three main areas that we use in design review of new projects. The guidelines convey the intended character, features, and quality to direct future development in order to protect, in order to promote pedestrian-friendly streets, attractive buildings, and finally, great living and working environments.
So before I turn this over to Eric Kraus to further explain the EIR, I wanted to use these graphics to really highlight what it is we would be looking at changing. You see that there are a number of centers that are acknowledged in the report, but if you look on the left, really the only thing that we are considering a change in density or zoning, or, or density or heights, who would be in the Tropical TOD. And if you reference back to that earlier gra- back to that earlier graphic, that was a rather isolated area. In terms of the corridors, we are looking, you can see a number of them on the, the right-hand graphic, there are only a certain number that we would be considering, and that's mainly for a, a change in zoning from a C3 designation to potentially a mixed use, but again, that is something that we would want to study and, and bring back to both the public commission and council as well. So again, no change in, in, in density, no change in, no increase in density, shall I say, but really a change in, in the urban form to allow development. Right now, the C3 zoning does not allow maximum density to achieve based on development standards. If we were to modify this to a mixed-use zoning, there's an opportunity that we could capture that full potential.
A quick question on that. The corridors are like East Broadway, East Colorado, South Central Avenue, am I correct?
That's correct.
Pacific Avenue Gateway, West Broadway, and South Glendale Avenue, basically. Give and take. While we're looking at the, the C3 zoning, I, I want to encourage, or I want to make a, you know, make a suggestion to look at the SFMU zone as well, because in SFMU zone today, like on West Broadway, if you're not creating a, a new lot, you can build apartment buildings. But if you want to build, I mean, I, I, we spoke about this issue with the, with the city attorney as well, if you want to build condominiums, for example, then you have to comply with certain restrictions that doesn't exist two blocks north of that, which is R1250 Zone, such as, I don't know, Myrtle, Salem, Wilson, those streets. With R1250 Zone, if you have 6,000 square feet lot, for example, you can build four units and, four cell units. But on SFMU Zone, you have to have a minimum lot size of maybe 10,000 square feet or frontage of 100 feet, so I encourage you to look at that option as well, so, because there are so many properties there that they cannot be developed, because I know the, the, the spirit of the ordinance was to property owners to just assemble properties and build bigger projects. And at this time, I don't know, if I'm looking for a huge project in that area, maybe some of these smaller condominium projects are better quality of life, if you will. If I want to buy a condominium, I'd rather buy it in a complex that has six to eight units instead of a 50-unit building. So that's one thing that I wanted to mention to take a look at in that area as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And from there, I'd like to turn it over to Deputy Director Eric Kraus, so he can give you a little better background information on the EIR before we talk about next steps. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to quickly walk through the final EIR and what was prepared for the proposed South Glendale Community Plan. Essentially, it was analyzed as a program EIR, so it could, we could analyze the max envelope they anticipated for the South Glendale Community Plan, which did include the 10,337 residential dwelling units and about 3.76 million square feet of non-residential. So I wanted to point out that any future development within the planned area would be required to have its own form of environmental review. That would then kind of use the information that's in this EIR as a starting point, so that's going to happen for any new development that does, is proposed in the South Glendale Community Plan area. In terms of significant unavoidable impacts-
Mr. Kraus? I'm, I'm kind of confused. We have an EIR tonight that you're asking us to approve, and now you're saying that this is an envelope and that for future planning, we'll have to have an EIR for every, every tech, every plan area that we look at? Plan area will require separate environmental review, including technical studies such as traffic, then what, why are we being asked to approve resolution number one?
Okay, so council member, divine members of the city council. So the, the plan actually, the EIR evaluated policy changes to the Glendale General Plan. It didn't include any kind of evaluation on this site-specific level, it's more of the overall arching area of the South Glendale Community Plan, so there's no site-specific environmental analysis done for the Glendale Community Plan. So when new projects do come in, similar to any other area of the city, we need to take a look at what potential environmental impacts that particular project would occur on that site. So then we would start with this EIR and, and you'll apply mitigation measures that are in here, and then determine what level of environmental review we'd have to do in addition to this EIR. So it won't be an EIR for every single project, some of them would be exempt under CEQA, some would be a, a negative declaration, mitigated negative declaration, some may raise the level of EIR, but this is, the program EIR would be something that we could tier off of then to evaluate future development projects.
Just to, just to clarify, Ms. Vine, when we say environmental review, we don't necessarily mean an environmental impact report. CEQA has all sorts of review that you have to do. Technical, we'll, we'll start with an initial study, and we'll, we'll identify, are there in potential for significant impacts? So we would do technical studies. If there aren't any, a project may be able to be considered under this EIR, but we will do that environmental review, some level of environmental review for every project. We did that in, in, in effect, we did that with all the projects in the downtown specific plan. Some of them may come, may have come to you as an addendum, but the work, the review was done in technical studies by staff prior to making that determination.
So this EIR in the, the res, the first resolution, the EIR is simply like a stepping-off point, and then we get more into the weeds as we get projects that come before us, or that you may decide you don't need another EIR on those, or?
I'm trying to explain CEQA, it's, it's essentially, whenever you're making policy changes, larger overall arching policy changes, that's a project under CEQA, and you need to determine what any potential impacts of those policy changes would have on the environment. So that's, the EIR is evaluating the South Glendale Community Plan, which doesn't have any, like, okay, doesn't have anything dialed down to site-specific locations. So in terms of the-
Let me ask you, what are the determinative factors which, which you rely on to determine whether, what, what are, what are the factors that you rely on to determine what level of additional EIR or additional environmental review a specific project will have to undergo? How do you decide? I mean-
Well, essentially, what we need to do, we start with the project and then determine if there's an exemption that falls under, if there's not, then we kind of go to the next level and do an initial study to determine what additional level of environmental review would be necessary.
So there's a checklist that exists?
Correct.
I mean, is this, this is some kind of an objective standard for each project, right?
That is correct, yes. It's, and that, we do follow the state CEQA guidelines as, whenever we do any evaluation on development projects or policy-level documents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So in terms of the significant unavoidable impacts that were identified in the EIR, there was the aesthetics in terms of degrading existing visual character, and this is primarily, it was an unmitigatable impact due to the fact that we don't have site-specific information available in terms of the overall massing of potential buildings, and that's similar also to a shade and shadow analysis as well, there's just not enough site-specific information to, at this moment. Air quality impacts, in terms of whether or not the project complies with some of the air quality rules and regulations out there, again, it's difficult for us to make a determination without having site-specific information on air quality impacts as well. There are some mitigation measures that were included as part of that, but those mitigation measures would apply to all new development of the projects, and those may or may not reduce project-level impacts unless it's significant, that at this time, we don't have enough detailed information to be able to determine that. Greenhouse gas emissions, we currently have a greenhouse, Greater Glendale Plan, which is our greenhouse gas study, but there's no environmental review associated with that, so that would be significant unavoidable until we actually develop and evaluate the greenhouse gas impact analysis. Population housing, the proposed project-
We have a question.
Yes.
So all of these items, greenhouse gas, population and housing, these are in case that this plan is implemented. All these projects are being done one after another. If we don't do anything, we still will have growth, right?
Correct.
If there's no zone change, you will have growth for sure. You know, cities grow organically. So most of these impacts, this is basically considered in the EIR the highest level. I mean, considering the eight or 10,000 units that you're assuming in the EIR that could be built in this area, am I correct?
That's correct.
If you built those 10,000 units, you would have these. You're also correct, if we did nothing with our policy, we would have natural growth. We studied that as part of the no project, and we found we have the same, the same areas of impact, it's just less, because there's less development.
Right, because there are properties today that are zoned for, I don't know, six units, but there, there's a duplex on it. Sometime in the future, the owners may demolish this duplex and build four units or five units, so that's how we, if we don't change the zoning, we will grow in a smaller pace, but we will, for sure, will grow, you know, not, not as much as this, this EIR is, we will be an organic, organic.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
So I, I need to-
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, but then it seems that we have an EIR that is based on projects that we don't have yet, or may not have. I don't understand the value of this-
EIR on a vision.
The EIR is-
Yeah, I understand.
If, if I could answer that real quick. So the EIR is evaluating the plan. The plan that we originally proposed included the additional 10,000 units and the additional square footage that would, there was other, there's areas of the plan that, when we first began drafting it, showed density increases throughout the South Glendale Plan area. As you'll hear later on, our recommendation is to not do that currently, so our plan, the recommendation would be to maintain the existing density that's on the ground today, with the exception of the TOD area where we will be upzoning the area around the hospital. So the plan that was evaluated in the EIR was that larger plan that we had originally proposed a few years back.
But Ms. Vine, what, what we do in that case is we look at an area and we say, there's going to be 10,000 units there. We don't look at a property, say, there's going to be 10,000 units there, and so what are the impacts? That's what we study. Later on, when somebody goes to do a project on a specific piece of property, they have to go do that review again for that project. So those are the different levels of environmental review.
Thanks. And population housing, that was significant unavoidable because the original plan that we proposed with those 10,000 units would have exceeded SCAG forecast for the city of Glendale, so that's the reason for the unavoidable impact there. And then, of course, public services related to police and fire due to our ratios that we use for analysis, and also recreation is similar too, in terms of whether or not it complies with the general plan standards. And transportation and traffic, we looked at 50 intersections as part of the environmental impact report, 27 of those would be impacted by the project, and then 22 of those would remain impacted after mitigation. I just kind of want to point out too, that even with the no project alternative, a lot of these significant unavoidable impacts do exist, including the ones for traffic. In terms of the final EIR, it contains the draft EIR. Comments received in response to those comments, we received a little over 60 comments, I believe, and a couple agencies commented. And then the mitigation monitoring reporting program is part of the EIR, and that is included to attachment B on the resolution that would certify the EIR, the statement of overriding considerations. Comments that we did receive, we've received comments from the State Clearhouse, obviously, and then also from the South Coast Area Quality Management District. Some of the organizations were the Royal County and Property Owners Association, the Glendale Rancho Neighborhood Association, Abundant Housing LA, Adams Hill Neighborhood Association, and then Whiting Woods Property Owners, National U.S. Route 6 Tourist Association, and then also the Carpenter's Contracts Cooperation Committee. And then we did receive 53 individual comment letters on the project. And so in terms of responding to the different responses that we did receive in the EIR, there's topical responses that were included in there, talked about aesthetics, recreation, traffic, and these are, like, most of these comments had similar, I guess, similar comments on these different sections of the EIR, so we formulated those and put those into topical areas so that we could address the majority of those, those comments in one topical response. And then we did actually respond to each of the individual comments received, as well as responses from the planning commission hearing that we had on June 25th on the EIR. In terms of completing the EIR process, council need to consider findings and the statement overriding considerations, and then adopt a resolution that certifies the EIR, and then also, after those things are done, then we can have, move forward with any kind of project approvals that you guys are willing to entertain this evening. So as, as we mentioned before, other projects are going to do their own review, and we have specific development projects. So that concludes my presentation. If there's no questions at this moment, I'm going to turn it back over to-
We have questions.
Yes, sir.
The responses to the letters and the comments from homeowners associations, different organizations, or state agencies, when you respond to them, do you get a comment back from them, or would that satisfy their, you know, their concerns, or their, does it answer all of their questions, or what is the process from that on?
Yes, after we respond to comments, then essentially, the EIR is required to be out for 10 days prior to being heard by the approving body. That time, then, those different agencies, associations, whoever's commenting on it has the opportunity to take a look at those comments, but we wouldn't necessarily modify those prior to coming before the city council. So they can, they're, could come up and speak in terms of whether or not they felt like we've addressed those comments appropriately, and then that's essentially how the process will go.
Thank you. Any more questions, Mr. Kraus? Thank you.
Thank you. So as we've mentioned, we are not looking to make any sweeping changes in terms of increases in density, but the South Glendale Community Plan will be essential for us to make important updates to our general plan, and that includes updating our, our land uses to match that plan. In many cases, these are allowing us to provide designations for things such as parks and schools under a civic designation, the, the uses along the Brand Boulevard of cars already allowed, but this puts, puts it in the general plan, and for transportation, which allows us to consider projects such as Space 134 and how we use right, right-of-ways. So the update, with the approval of the South Glendale Community Plan, would allow us to update these elements of the general plan. There is also a circulation element to this, this has been budgeted for 2018, 2019, and this is something that we would continue to work on as part of advancing the study of the corridors and the districts and the centers, and bring that back to council as well.
What's the budget for that?
One and a half million dollars.
Quick question for you. The single-family hillside residential, it's a bullet point that it says, match 1990 hillside development ordinance, this is for Adams Hill area?
That is correct, yes. Verify, Paul.
And the roadside? All residential hillsides. You want to come-
In South Glendale specific plan area? So if, they are complying with it right now, but it's not in our books, is that what it is? Because I, I thought every, every hillside development has to comply with the hillside development ordinance.
This just puts residential hillside as a land use designation in the general plan. The zoning already exists, it just, it just makes it consistent by putting it in the general plan.
So general plan will be consistent with the zoning?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the one policy ask that we have and recommendation is part of tonight's presentation, are these six properties between Wilson and California and Jackson and Isabel, they're currently zoned C33, and one, one parcel is split-zoned, and what we are recommending this evening is that those be changed to C1, and that would end up changing the height, the allowable, excuse me, I lost my notes here, from 90 feet in six stories to 50 feet in three stories on those parcels. And that would be the last two items in terms of recommendations. In terms of next steps, assuming that the EIR is certified this evening, the Tropico Center Plan is amended, we could also make the zoning code map amendments based on those last six parcels I just discussed. The adoption of the South Glendale Community Plan is essential, as it allows us to move forward with the actual creation of policy. As we had mentioned before, we're just in a planning phase at this point. But what would allow us to do is to work on the plan implementation, that's to initiate the Tropico zoning and the study of that zoning, TOD 1 and TOD 2, to continue studying those centers, corridors, neighborhoods, and districts. That includes zoning, design guidelines, development standards, updating the land use element, and the circulation element, which I had mentioned before, we will return with. We're also working on the downtown specific plan amendments as well, and that's something that- that last, I believe last week, we had just received consent on that contract, so that's another piece that would be moving forward as part of this body of work. So in conclusion, we have a number of recommended actions that we have put forth. Do you want to go through all of them?
We can go through them again if you'd like.
One by one, or?
They're listed there, we'll leave that up while you deliver.
Yeah, let's go, let's go through them briefly.
So the first would be to certify the final EIR. The second is the motion to adopt the Tropico Center Plan as amended. That includes the TOD 1 and TOD 2. A motion to initiate the preparation of that TOD zoning in the Tropico Center. Number four is the motion to direct staff to modify the South Glendale Community Plan, and that really goes back to the fact that we're trying to pull that increase in density out with the exception of Tropico. So just focusing on Tropico and then the mixed-use zoning along those corridors. It also allows us to move forward with the, with study sessions with the planning commission, public engagement, returning to council as we look at all of these elements, to modify the road, road ends neighborhood, to designate the area R1R as single-family hillside residential, to maintain existing residentials throughout all residential neighborhoods in the South Glendale Community Plan, and to also come back and provide progress reports as part of this body of work. Number five would be motion directing staff to modify the land use element text and map amendments to match the South Glendale Community Plan modifications. And number six and seven tie back to those six properties between Wilson and California, and that would, a resolution to amend the land use element, and then an introduction of an ordinance to amend the zoning map related to those six parcels.
Okay, very well, thank you. Do we have any questions?
Okay.
It's okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
If we do not certify, if, if one of us does not certify the EIR, then we cannot approve of the other six, can we?
That is correct, we can have a forward with those.
You could, well, just technically, I mean, if you don't certify the area, you can't take any of the action items, which are, the six and seven and, I guess, three, wait, two, sorry. If you just wanted to direct staff or initiate, you can still do that without certifying the EIR, but at that point, once you don't certify the EIR, not really sure the point going forward at that point.
Yes, as I said, this is a, more like a comment than a question. The C3 zones that we are downzoning right now, there are six properties, do you know what, what's on those properties at this time? Do you know what's, is it an office building, is it an apartment building?
They're a one-story commercial. Where there's the apartment building, that is the one that we're asking you to, for lack of a better term, upzone or match the R1250 to which it's already built. The others are smaller, one, two-story commercial.
In, in cases like this, that we are only downzoning three or four properties, and it's like spot zoning, we're downzoning five or six properties only, I think we need to let the owners know in writing, in, in a letter form, because I know that we put an advertising in, in news press or whatever, or an ad, but I think in cases like this, that it's only four or five properties, it's, it's important to let the owners know, because we don't know what their plans are, or, you know, they've been, they might have bought this property a long time ago with the, with the hopes of doing something with it. And you're downzoning it today only five or six parcels, I don't think that's fair just not to let them know either, so.
Point well taken. I will say, there were a lot, hundreds of parcels that were going to go up and down in the plan, if we were to have gone forward with the zoning that was suggested in the plan. When we pulled back on that, we were left with six, and I understand your point.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions? All right, before I, did I open a public hearing yet on this item?
Nothing.
No. Okay, so before I do that, let's take recess on this item and move back to the, to item 9C. I think finally we have the right numbers. And, Mr. Clerk, do you have that information?
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor and Member of Council, the numbers are 78.47 in support, they are the same numbers, and 21.53 in opposition.
Yes. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Devine.
I, I just wanna make a comment on that. This afternoon, I voted to abstain on this particular motion, because I didn't, I felt that the property owners should have the, the right to, to vote, and that the city should remain neutral. There was a question of 5.85 percent, that's the amount, the percentage of the city's vote, and obviously it did not matter. I had all the faith that the businesses would support this. Greater City Downtown Business Association, they have done so, and I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased, so thank you.
So I'm sorry, what was the, the final tally again?
Final, the final number is 78.47 in support, and 21.53 opposition.
So our vote technically would not have made a difference one way or another, it was just a vote of confidence towards the measure. Okay? Is there anything that needs to be done on this item?
I was just saying, you need to motion to approve the formation of the district.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Seventy-eight percent. Seventy-eight percent.
Second.
9C1.
We have a second. May we have the roll call, please?
One or the other.
Councilmember Agajania?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Karbetian?
Yes.
Najaria?
Yes.
Marisinanyan? Yes, and that concludes item 9C. Let's go back to item 9B. Open the public hearings, and we, we have a lot of cards, folks, and obviously it's a very important issue, and it's very appropriate that we have this many speakers on this item. So I'm going to give everyone two minutes, please try to remain within that limit, and no emotional outbursts or clapping, please. And we'll start with Andrew Allison, followed by Grant Michaels.
Evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers, I'm Andrew Allison. I'll try to keep this in two minutes, I'll, I'll read my statement fast here. By way of background, I'm a South Glendale resident, and I'm an architect specializing in transit architecture and public transportation projects. I'm a supporter of smart and well-designed development to the extent that the emergency responders and city services can be fully responsive to the needs of the, of the new project. I'm also a regular public transit user in South Glendale and take the bus and MetroLink to downtown LA regularly, and as such, I'm a pedestrian walking on the South Glendale sidewalks frequently. I have a number of concerns and some areas of support for the plan, but in my limited time, I want to speak to two points. First, I would support the, I would like to see well-designed TOD around the Glendale train station, with residential office, commercial mixed uses, including shopping and food options. I would refer you to the, the modest historical train station at Fullerton in Orange County, and how well they've accommodated these uses in addition to parking, and how, how pleasant it is as a reasonably well-considered area around the station. I would even propose that Glendale could market the area around Glendale Station to creatives, creatives and workers in downtown LA as the convenience of a one-stop ride to Union Station, which currently includes a free ride on Metro is hard to beat. My second point, and this is very specific, other, other commenters will get into other points, but my second point is about the street trash and furniture blight that collects on South Glendale sidewalks. The comment I made on the South Glendale Plan was that I would find it difficult to support any new development in South Glendale until I could see that the city was getting a handle on this extensive problem. I've seen trash and abandoned furniture remain for weeks at a time, which gives our neighborhood the appearance of a rundown area where residents don't care about neat, clean, and safe streets and sidewalks. That was my comment on, on the plan, and the responses I received were, number one, quote, "impacts suggested by the comment are addressed in a section on utilities and service systems," unquote. I've referred to that section, which talks about solid waste and in general terms discusses the capacities of area landfills. I don't find anything that addresses the specifics of my comment. The second response, quote, "all future development would be required to comply with all federal, state, local statutes, et cetera, et cetera." This is very general, I don't, I don't consider it responsive to my comment. The third response was, quote, "assessment of adequate waste collection services would also be required to ensure that sufficient waste provision is accounted for with future growth within the proposed S, South Glendale Community Plan area," unquote. My question is, how would this assessment be done, and that we need more information on that? I know that the MyGlendale app allows for the reporting of such trash, and I've used it myself a number of times. However, however, the street trash in, problem in South Glendale is so epidemic that it is beyond the abilities of a few people intermittently making requests via the app. Mayor Garcetti in the city of Los Angeles has recently discussed this problem in LA and talked about how the city has identified streets where they're called over and over again, and they are providing strike teams to regularly patrol these streets and pick up garbage. Perhaps Glendale could do something similar. I would also suggest that the city of Glendale do more to hold landlords accountable for street trash that builds up and remains in front of the buildings. My neighbors and I have come up with some other ideas on how the city might address this problem. We would welcome the opportunity to discuss this further with relevant city departments and personnel. We love our community, and we would like to see it improve and get better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Grant Michaels. Grant Michaels, followed by Michael Beck. Mr. Clerk? You sure it's two minutes, right?
It is, yeah.
Good evening. My name is Grant Michaels. While I am involved in many organizations, I am speaking as an individual tonight. I was perhaps the first one to speak to this council on the outreach for the South Glendale Community Plan. I was involved with the implementation of the North Glendale Community Plan and spoke seeking the clarification of how the committee and how the outreach was going to be done for the South Glendale Community Plan. I was given the same answer, that this is a well-studied area, and that type of outreach wouldn't be needed. Through the Homeowners Coordinating Council and other organizations, I participated in that outreach to develop this South Glendale Community Plan. I share the concerns of many who will speak after me and those who are on the council. In the presentation of this, this was the South Glendale Community Plan, and even hearing from Director Kraus, this now is engaging how changes will be made to the general plan amendment. We have no general plan changes from the North Glendale Community Plan, the East and West Plans have yet to be done, and I'm struggling to clarify that point as you are, of, is this a procedural document that is overarching to develop the general plan, or are these going to be site-specific to South Glendale? I do want to commend the, the city staff for putting this together in a forthright presenting the negative impacts, but I have questions on the EIR, its calculations. The calculations were using SCAG numbers, and they focused down to the South Glendale area. The calculations were not done for the rest of the city to balance the equation, to determine the validity of those equations. With the, I do not support the statement of overriding concern, the mitigation measures are insufficient. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michael Beck, followed by Rondi Werner.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. I have my biggest objection to this EIR around greenhouse gas emissions. And here it says that these emissions are likely to increase under this plan. And I would like to draw the attention of both the council and the audience to the front page of the LA Times today, which pointed out that California is basically burning up. We have unprecedented heat, drought, and fires from global warming and greenhouse gas emissions, and I, as a citizen, do not accept any increases at all in greenhouse gas emissions in any city plan whatsoever. Thus, I oppose this EIR. The, the impacts in section A here were, I think it's called Attachment A, overridden by all of these kind of like glorious-sounding sort of unsubstantiated advantages to the city. They do not really count as any sort of mitigation in my mind. I am especially concerned there's no real mitigation on some of the biggest environmental impacts, such as increased use of energy for new units, especially with the fact that there is very little planning currently coming out of GWP on going to renewable energy. So I would again completely oppose this EIR until we get a better idea on where renewable energy is gonna come from. Also concerned about the increased traffic, I know with my own car that my mileage goes down to next to nothing when I'm idling in traffic. So I do ask that this plan behold, kept on hold, the EIR, until these concerns are addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Rondi Werner, followed by Cynthia Reimers.
Hello, Mayor, council staff, and the public of Glendale. I'm Rondi Werner, I'm president of the Adams Hill Neighborhood Association, the only neighborhood association in the South Glendale Plan area. And we feel that rampant overdevelopment has degraded, degraded the quality of life in South Glendale for far too long. Even the EIR states that we're already below federal standards when it comes to police coverage and fire response times. The national averages, or the national standard is a four-minute response time, we're already over five. And no one has even reached out to the police and fire to see how they could accommodate this additional population. It is that low of a priority, apparently. When former city manager Ochoa presented the South Glendale Community Plan, the preliminary plan, in, in 2013, we expressed concern over the lack of parking and overcrowding and so on, and we were assured that we would be given the same quality of life that the people in other parts of Glendale enjoy. So we were very disappointed when we saw the plan and how it sought to, to add thousands of more people without any reasonable mitigation of any of the impacts. The statement of overriding considerations is completely unsubstantiated, vague, and most of these goals could be achieved through the no-plan alternative. And if council was really concerned about providing affordable housing, why had they been so reluctant to consider rent control? It would be great if somebody could opine on that, because we've been wondering that for quite a while. For many years, we've been expected to accept adversities so the city can qualify for grants and the redevelopment dollars of the past. Once again, it seems like the living standard of South Glendale is again up for sale to the highest bidder. As we see it, the community development vision is South Glendale's nightmare. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Reimers, followed by Lorne of Arthanyan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Cynthia Reimers, and I'm a property owner of a 13-unit apartment building named the Graceland Apartments located at 107111 North Columbus. I'm here tonight to address the historical survey element of the plan, and I'm wondering why Mr. Calvert hasn't mentioned the historical survey. The property that I own is within the SFMU zoning area with a potential of building 28 housing units. In June of this year, we entered into escrow with the builder developer. After numerous visits by our broker, the developer, their architect, with the city of Glendale's planning staff, it looked like the project would be viable. In their final visit, the day before the due diligence period ended, Jay Pratt, your historic preservation specialist, informed the developer that the building had been placed on a survey list of potential historic structures, and that the building could not be demolished to build the housing units. This was a revelation to your planning staff as well, the developer, the broker, and to me, the property owner. It resulted in the developer canceling the escrow, costing the broker his fees, the developer thousands of dollars in architectural fees. This revelation, since this revelation, the value of the property has plummeted over 25 percent. My first question to the council is, what is the city's priorities? What is your vision for the property-zoned SFMU? Do you want to provide housing for the city, or do you want to preserve an old, outdated apartment building in the name of historic preservation? My My second question is, why have you not informed the other 400 property owners that their property is now on a survey list? That this could negatively impact the value of their property and their ability to make improvements to it? Surely, you want to make property owners informed of how the city's policies may affect their property rights. As you deliberate the specific plan, I would suggest that you remove and address the historic preservation element separately. It is much too serious of an infringement on your citizens' property rights to be buried in this document. As another alternative, I would suggest no action should be taken on this plan until all 400 property owners have been notified that their property has been placed on this historical survey list. The city performs this level of outreach when considering the adoption of a landmark district. Why not use the same level of outreach to this historic preservation element? If you vote to adopt this plan tonight, I will notify all 400 property owners that the city of Glendale has failed to notify them that their property is on this list and that the result of being on this list will limit their ability to improve, develop their property, and potentially reduce their property value. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you. Lorna Vartanian, followed by Diane Lewis.
I have to remember to prepare for two minutes, then we're scrambling. I'm Lorna Vartanian, president of the Rossmine Mountain Homeowners Association. In March, city council adopted a moratorium in the DSP area because, quote, "The city finds that the significant and unavoidable traffic impacts, as well as other significant and unavoidable impacts that have resulted from residential development projects in the DSP represent a current and immediate threat to the public health, safety, and welfare," end quote. The results of the final EIR being considered tonight further confirm that the quality and level of induced growth being proposed for our city is unacceptable and inappropriate. The disruption to the DSP is the result of 6,000 units being built in the span of 10 years. Alternative two can bring another 7,400 units. And as Mr. Najarian stated at the March meeting regarding the moratorium, quote, "There are wolves at the door, people. There are buildings in the pipeline that will make what was built pale in comparison," end quote. You are looking at a blueprint to build without the infrastructure to support it. You are creating transit-oriented development without the appropriate transportation in place. And this is confirmed by the numerous instances where the EIR states that expected impacts due to increases in vehicular traffic cannot be mitigated. An open admission that car traffic is not going away. And there is no timeline that manages at what pace growth will occur and whether or not housing will be built at the same pace as transportation. In other words, all of the buildings could go up before anything is in place to mitigate our already congested streets and failing intersections. Nothing in this EIR or community plan can guarantee future transportation or the funding for that transportation from metro or anywhere else. The negative impacts which came to light 10 years after creation of the DSP and led to a moratorium should not be allowed to expand in the South Glendale Community Plan, and the EIR should not be certified before the results of the DSP study are completed. The proposed plan and its alternatives are overaggressive. Without further studies, the only acceptable recommendation now is for the no-project alternative. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vartanian. Diane Lewis, followed by Patty Silvershire.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
I looked on the Glendale city website today, and I found, I printed this, and it shows this colored area down here, which is South Glendale. And while the city average of density per square mile is something around 6,000 people, South Glendale has between 15,000 and 30,000 people. And so that's shocking to me, that we're talking about building more when we already have such high density in this area. Currently, what we have is ugly. You know, I mean, the stuff that was built in the '70s, it seems like there was no regulation. And so they overbuilt on the lots. They go all the way back. I don't know how many units. There's no parking. Parking is on the street. That's getting harder and harder to find. I would hope that we could say, we don't need more density. Why don't we have more green space? Why don't we have garden-type of apartment buildings and condos? You know, why not have, why do we have to replace two units with six? Why can't we maybe tear down those two units and replace them with three or four maximum, if that's what we want to do, but require that we have trees and green space and some open space? You know, I'm tired of this wall-to-wall building. It's all concrete down there, and it also traps heat. And my last question is, where does the water come from? You know, how do we add more and more people in California in general, but here as well? And where do we find the water? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis, just, I'm just curious. Are you an apartment dweller, or you reside in the house?
No, I own back home.
You own it? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Patty Silvershire, followed by Stephen Meek. Did I get that last name correctly?
Yes, Silvershire, uh-huh. Mayor, council, and staff, thank you for letting us all speak this evening. Community plan? This looks more to many of us who live here in South Glendale as a developers' plan. Over 20,000 more residents for South Glendale? And we have how much green space in regards to parks here in South Glendale? Transportation? Do we have the transportation infrastructure to even support transit-oriented development? Parking? What about the huge parking problem throughout South Glendale? This week, it was reported the declining use of public transportation because of the impact of Uber and Lyft. Does this call into question the assumption that less parking will be necessary in the future? Water conservation? So you add an additional 20,000 people, and then you do, and then what do you do? Do you implement restrictions on water to five minutes a week? One day a week? Housing? If council wants to commit to make housing affordable, who on council is supporting rent control? Affordable housing? Who benefits financially? The developers? Building new developments that are too small for families? That only drives up prices? And what about our air quality? Won't all these people be driving? Over 20,000 people adding thousands more cars? How about the public agencies? I had an Adams Hill Disaster Preparedness meeting at my house with representatives from both the police and fire department. They mentioned how understaffed they are and that we will virtually be on our own in an emergency situation and not to expect any emergency services. Where's the funding for them? Going into more development here in South Glendale? We have questions. We have many, many questions. What are your answers?
Thank you, Ms. Silvershire. Stephen Meek, followed by Ali Jones.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The South Glendale Plan would include substantial population growth in the area, would increase demand for fire and police services. Traffic analysis identified current significant traffic impacts which cannot be mitigated and will only exasperate the population and the traffic. The EIR cites specified parameters for meeting the needs of South Glendale. It states the standard officer-to-population ratio by the police department is two officers per 1,000 residents, which currently we need to add 408 officers. With the increased population, the plan would need 464 more officers. Traffic analysis for the EIR shows 50 intersections studied and over half of those operating at below the level of service standards. Mitigation plans were only identified for five of these intersections. Therefore, existing conditions which will result in significant traffic impacts and cannot be mitigated, they will only be exasperated. While each of the problems was detailed in the EIR, the statement of overriding considerations, which is proposed to show the economic, social, and other benefits of the project outweigh the significant impacts of the EIR, is severely lacking in detail. For example, number six states the project will strengthen South Glendale's pedestrian, bicycle, and transit-oriented characteristics while ensuring the vehicular access in the regional destinations. It's hard to imagine how this can be true if the 27 intersections currently working at below the level of service now are going to have to handle even more traffic. Emergency services and recreational facilities are not even addressed in the statement of overriding considerations. Please try to address some of these projects before we move any farther forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ali Jones, followed by Naira Sobatian.
Thank you for having me. I'm a resident here at 215 North Kenwood. And it's pretty simple. I mean, they've already said it all. We really ask that you do not certify the ER, the EIR. It's very simple. Looking at the stats, looking at the numbers, it just doesn't make sense. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Naira Sobatian, followed by Priscilla Carday.
Good evening. My name is Naira Sobatian. I'm here today as a resident and property owner in South Glendale, and I express the position and the plea of a vast majority of South Glendale residents. We all urge you to vote against the proposed South Glendale Community Plan, against the certification of its flawed EIR, against the adoption of the statement overriding considerations, and against the recommended amendments to the general plan. The SGCP and the EIR are procedurally deficient. I have presented my detailed objections as to the reasons why the EIR must not be certified. Here are just a few of those. It uses changed and inaccurate baseline of the growth of units and not the growth of the population. It does not focus on the infrastructure of Glendale to support such growth. It fails to analyze or mitigate the impact and instead exacerbates those. The EIR fails to present reasonable range of alternatives to cure any of the seven environmental impacts. For example, downzone some areas to create a safe buffer against the mandates of the state bills that keep coming. Pasadena is doing it right now. The EIR omits integral parts and dismisses legitimate concerns of affordable housing, lack of parkland, traffic, and parking problems. It completely omits the individual and cumulative impacts of the general plan amendments. It engages in piecemealing whereby you are asked today to adopt only the tropical part of the alternative two, while the downtown part of the alternative two is still under study. And today's staff recommends another piecemealing where you will be approving something, and then they will keep studying the plan and the amendments. Certifying the EIR means you know what exactly will happen in Glendale as to the development. No one here knows, not even the staff who drafted the EIR. We are told in the EIR that with the no-project, in the next 25 years, we will add only 2,500 units. And yet, in the past 12 years, which is half of that, we have added 6,000 units in Glendale. So the numbers in the EIR cannot be trusted. And also, there's just no reason why we should be allowing overriding considerations that could outweigh the public health and safety of over 100,000 people in Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Priscilla Carday, followed by Aga Kubloboski, Kubloboska.
Good evening. My name is Priscilla Carday, and I have lived at 215 North Kenwood Street for the past 17 and a half years and lived in the city of Glendale for the last 23 years. I have appeared before, each of you, before expressing my concerns as to all the developments going on in South Glendale. Please rethink this through. There is an extreme negative health effect with all this development going on. I am asking for all of you to vote against the South Glendale Community Plan development and against certifying the EIR. I want to express something that I experienced today. I called the Department of Quality Water and about, because I was concerned about the water and the air quality. As you know, the building that's being, the hotel that's being built on Louise and Wilson, there's a lot of debris that's being emitted into the air. And I was told that as the bulldozers are digging, there's supposed to be water hosing. I've seen it once where there were hosing that looked something like a garden hose. It's not saturated with water, so this way, when they're digging it up, the debris isn't spreading into the air. If I have to drive, I usually walk to the doctor, which is on Orange and Broadway. It's a 12-minute walk. I now have to drive because I can't walk through that area because of the debris that goes into the air. There's this grittiness that gets into your eyes, and you can breathe it into your nose. This is an unhealthy issue. Something needs to be done as far as being mindful when they're doing this demolition and construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Aga Kadluboska. Sorry, I'm doing my best. Followed by Bill Redman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, members of council. My name is Aga Kadluboska, and it's the first time I'm speaking before the city council. But I, tonight, I feel called to do it as a member of South Glendale community because I'm very alarmed by what we've been discussing tonight. So I'm speaking for myself, but also on behalf of my neighbors. Many of them couldn't be here tonight because they're busy at work, making money to care for their families, pay their mortgages, and to contribute to the mom-and-pop businesses that make the neighborhood thrive. I can tell you, I speak for families that have diverse backgrounds, but they have one very important thing in common: their love for their South Glendale neighborhood. No matter how much money they make, or no matter how much money they have or don't have, where they're from, or what do they do for a living, they call South Glendale their home. That said, when speaking with my neighbors, it became clear that in their busy lives, caring for elderly parents or young kids, learning the intricate details of this plan, especially for some where English isn't their first language, is overwhelming. Sometimes, something, most of them, they couldn't really understand what is EIR or the adoption of a statement of overriding consideration. No matter how we discussed it, it was confusing. But one thing we all completely understand is the very serious impact of how, what is decided here tonight, will impact the quality of our lives. Traffic, air quality, emergency services, parks, there are very big concerns for average citizens that may be of a little importance to big developers, but we should hope would be of major importance to the people they vote for because you have been elected to stand for the best interests of your constituents. Do I still have time? Okay. I'm sorry. While we understand your job is no easy task, we want you to hear from us directly, from those of us who live in South Glendale, who have already had to deal with daily impact by development for years now. We just need a break. We really do. Our quality of life has already been impacted. Please consider this and refuse to adopt any part of the project for the mom-and-pop businesses, for the people who are working two jobs to pay the rent and mortgage so that they can live in the beautiful city of Glendale. So that they, show them that the legacy of this council won't be bought by big businesses, but developed for all. Offer them green space for the children, air quality for the elderly, and an opportunity to have a mom-and-pop businesses thrive. Please refuse to adopt this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Kadluboska, are you a renter or an owner?
It doesn't matter.
Are you a renter or an owner?
I'm a renter, yes.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yes, but, yes, yes. Thank you so much.
Bill Redman, followed by Pamela Augustine. Good evening.
Council members, staff, thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Bill Redman. I live in Adams Hill. The EIR for the South Glendale Plan included a traffic report, traffic study. This study was limited in scope, analyzing the four scenarios. In each case, it indicated a significant and unavoidable adverse effect on congestion, which in turn affects fire and police response times and, worse, twice a day, my commute. The traffic study was further limited in that it didn't measure pedestrian and bicycle traffic at the intersections that were studied. That information isn't pertinent to the particular methodology used. However, the methodology explains that such things do affect, that pedestrians and bicycle traffic do affect how an intersection operates and increases congestion. Glendale expects to increase pedestrian and bicycle traffic. Glendale expects to increase pedestrian and bicycle traffic by design, and all of the scenarios have that as a premise. Therefore, this is going to affect, in different degrees, traffic congestion under all of the plans. Now, necessarily, the EIR is constrained to underestimate traffic. If it can't include a parameter that we know is going to increase congestion, it must necessarily underestimate the congestion. In medicine, the guiding principle is do no harm, and that's a principle I'd promote in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redman. Pamela Augustine, followed by Ms. Val, Pamela Augustine, followed by V. Valentine.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Augustine. I'm a resident of South Glendale. And today, I just want to comment more on the specifics that were shared with all of you. I think as, so far as public comment, as my fellow Glendale residents have shared, there are more questions than answers that the community has. There are more concerns than support for this environmental impact report. And I'm here with to share with you that when we talk about visioning a future for a community, a community of over 200,000 residents, when those that presented today, Mr. Lanzafame, hi, 53 or less than 60 public comment cards or people that responded and gave their input that we have as written comment is not enough. When 200,000, more than 200,000 people represent this community, everybody, whether you're a homeowner, a renter, a small business owner, a developer, an elected official, you're part of the community. Your voices matter. And when we talk about visioning something like a community plan, that can take more than 10 years to develop, to get consensus around, that will impact a community as it's stated today in the environmental impact report for more than 20 years, it is important that we take the time to really listen to what are the needs and priorities of residents. Doesn't matter what kind of stakeholder you are. So, I really encourage the city council to also not adopt today's environmental impact report. And I also encourage those that put it together to follow in the steps of other communities in LA County, such as the South LA Community Plan. In South LA, since 2007, residents were involved in putting together a community plan. They were part of the environmental impact report. It took from 2007 to, last year, 2017, to make an impact, a community plan where they felt is really guided by the needs and priorities of residents. And I think it's a model that we should adopt here in Glendale. But I'm welcome to listening to more. Thank you.
Thank you. V. Valentine? That's the last card that we have.
I've been running a marathon tonight. Two minutes. I'm out of breath just listening, and I didn't understand anything that was said. I missed the boat. I came because Mayor Zarek Sinanian invited me to Diane to come and talk about traffic. I don't even know what this SGRP is. SCGP, doesn't matter. But maybe I'll gain something, and maybe you will gain something from me. So, I understand it's about population explosion. How many new streets will there be put, laid down in Glendale? School, in the school, children are working, and then the bell rings and the dogs are loose in the yard. They go out in the yard like the dogs, loose, do what you want. The city of Glendale is so tiny, so small, so compact. The illegals, I have taken it over in your building, spending millions of dollars to fix it. The illegals, I mean the illegal drivers, illegal cars, that drive illegal cars and cause illegal traffic. They don't follow the law, rules of traffic. So, my suggestion is get CHP involved. They have no work on the freeway. Freeway is bumpers to bumper. Give, give police volunteer opportunity, no pay, no writing reports for four hours a day, but do the manpower and drive the streets around. Young policemen will love to do it. Create gated communities. Put gates, make little nooks and crannies. Emerald Isle must get a gate. Make one-way street blocks, pedestrians only. Put, lay train tracks down so that it'll be cumbersome for them to, to do what they're doing. They're driving with deadly weapons, shooting, shooting. Okay. The bonds were approved a while back, I heard it. How many have they laid so far, the city? It took three years to put a marker on, on Foothill Boulevard? I can't believe this. Where is the public works? Put cameras in. You have to include cameras. Put, create sound alarms. When that illegal goes driving, the sound alarm goes off. He'll get his own medicine back.
Ms. Valentine, can you wrap it up?
And find the remote controls to disable those illegal cars and illegal drivers. Well, for what it's worth. It has to be, the word moratorium doesn't exist anymore in Glendale, right? I come from Sicomora Canyon, from the wilderness part of Glendale, the green area. Where is the map? Does anybody know what? I don't think the city employees have ever taken a walk there.
Thank you, Ms. Valentine. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So, how do we handle this? Not a, not a speaker in support of it, huh? Why don't, Mr. Najarian, do you have comments? Are you ready for that? Folks, can we have silence in the chambers, please? Thank you.
Well, let, let me sort of get this, get the perspective on this. Again, let me turn to Mr. Lanzafame. So, we know that there's going to be growth if we, even if we don't make any action tonight.
That is correct.
And that's to the tune of about?
2,400 units over the next 24 years.
Okay. So, the purpose of this downtown, excuse me, the purpose of the South Glendale plan is to show what impacts, to describe a range of development scenarios, from doing nothing to doing something quite intensive.
I would, I would correct you to say the EIR.
The EIR.
Studied that. The plan itself has different levels of development for which we, I think we'd said, we're recommending that you take out those densities, those changes in density.
Okay. Because that came to us a while ago in a study session, and we said, as a, as a council, we don't want to increase the densities. And the zoning changes that would upzone were removed. Isn't that what we asked staff to do?
The plan itself, and, and we set this in motion almost two years ago, the plan itself does reckon, does envision increases in density. If you remember, those were paired with transit improvements. And I know that it was mentioned, the DSP, that got approved, and, and we have 6,000 units in 12 years. The difference between that and this plan is, even if you adopted it as is, this plan doesn't change any zoning. You have to go through and, and actually change the zoning. In the downtown specific plan case, we brought all of that at once. We changed the, we did the EIR and changed the zoning all at once. This is a more stepped approach, and it was designed that way to say, as transit comes on, you can increase density. Now, what we're suggesting to you tonight, what we're recommending, and I, I think you've heard just about everybody that spoke, the concern about that is direct us to take the density increases out of this plan.
That's what I was getting at.
That's what.
That we direct you to take the density increases.
That's correct.
Out of this plan. And the major changes upon, that's, that are being recommended is to, is to change the, the current configuration in the tropical area.
That is correct.
And that is envisioned as a transit-oriented development center.
Correct.
And that means that because of transit, we want different amenities in that surrounding area.
Correct.
And some of it includes making it more pedestrian-friendly. Some of it means more amenities, different types of amenities, where people taking transit can now shop, dine, have their services, dry cleaners and all that, where currently, it's not quite zoned for all those uses.
Correct.
And, and then there's the other part near the hospital where they have a special request to, for some height and, and density, but that's only on the hospital campus.
And, and I would add, which is very important, first, we are so fortunate to have three hospitals, two of which are regional medical centers, not only for the employment, set that aside, but for the health services that it provides. They must make certain upgrades according to law. And so, this would accommodate that and allow them to make those, those revisions.
Okay. Now, with regard to transit, some, some speakers said there is no transit, there is not enough transit. We were, I think all of my colleagues joined me yesterday for a, a transportation meeting, a mini transportation summit in the police community room, where we heard from members of Metro and Metrolink and high-speed rail. And the message that we received is that there is going to be a large increase in transit along the rail lines that stop at the Larry Zarian Transportation Center. It's the intent for Metrolink to have service that is going to be on half-hour regular schedule throughout the whole day. So, you don't have to find out, gee, when does my train come? You show up at the train station, you're going to get something for a half hour. Fares are reduced. A gentleman was talking about fares, or perhaps it was a letter I got. It's $3 now to go from Glendale Station to downtown Union Station, and that gets you a free metro pass to ride on the red line or the purple line or anything else. There's the Amtrak, Surf liner, that travels that same route. We're talking about adding an additional type of service that is on those tracks called multiple units. And this doesn't even address the streetcar concept that we've been working on and discussing, which is going to start at the train station there and perhaps go off Brand or Central and then cut over to Burbank. So, I can attest that there is a lot of transit coming to that particular area. So, it makes perfect sense to me that we encourage smart growth, transit-oriented development in that region. We're going to encourage people not to have vehicles in that region, that they, if they have a job, they can just jump on the Metrolink or the Amtrak or that other service and get to Union Station downtown and do their business. And the, the travel goes the other way as well. If you have to go to Burbank, to Disney Studios, to Burbank Airport and beyond, there's going to be transit. So, I think it's an excellent investment in that. And that, in fact, is the, it was the impetus for Metro to award funds for our planning study for the anticipated growth in that, in and around that train center. So, the only real growth that we're looking at, and it's not necessarily a density growth, it's a use, a change of use, is in that tropical center. So, I see that as a, as a very modest proposal for changing the way we're planning in South Glendale. We've put the brakes on everything. Who, who says we don't know the word moratorium? I mean, we are in the middle of a moratorium right now, and there's, my face is on the, the dartboards of probably every developer in town who's pissed off that we put their, put the brakes on their plan. Some of the staff isn't too happy either about it. But that's, that's not the point. So, we are acting reasonably. We are looking for ways to keep the growth down. We know how dense South Glendale is. But the improvements that we're proposing are going to make life better. It's going to make transit better. It's going to make getting around and make your, I guess, make your, your lives more enjoyable. We can't stop growth completely. 2,400 units can be built if we don't do anything. If we scrap this plan and throw it away, we'll have that growth and we won't have any change to that tropical area where we can encourage people who are going to live near the train station, take the transit, and not get on the streets with their cars. So, that's the way I'm thinking about it, Mr. Mayor. I, I know there's a lot of, I mean, and there's a lot of moving parts to this. There's a lot of, you know, this is volume, this is volume one of about six volumes that we have on this, on this project. You know, I don't know what to say. I understand what all the residents are talking about, but I don't see this as a threat, the level of threat that they're, that they're discussing. This isn't going to, you know, send thousands and thousands of new units in their neighborhoods. This is a way to, to, to project what impacts would be if there were large-scale growth. But all that we're talking about today is right around that train station, near the hospital, permitting some different types of uses. So, I'm, I mean, in terms of a first step, and that is the first step, certifying the, the EIR and adopt the statement of overriding concerns, I mean, I'm at that, I'm on the cusp of approving that and supporting that, unless I hear something that is completely opposite from what I'm hearing from staff and what I've read in this report.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Mr. Nagarjenian?
The plan was to add 10,000 units, and as, as we mentioned here, that we said, no, we don't want to do it. Let's leave everything the way it is, other than small area where the hospital is. So, the natural progress of the city, people, they have it lot, and the zoning allows them to add units. We can't stop them. We are not downzoning every area. We are not adding anything. If somebody during next 15, 20 years, they want to demolish their building and put like four units or six units, we can't stop them. So, we didn't change anything, anything. The suggestion was to change it and allow people to have, to build 10,000 units, and we said no. And I don't know where the problem really lies. So, that's, I, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have so many notes that some of the, sorry. This is an important issue. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight and voicing their opinion. I took notes as the speakers were coming up. The trash of the, you know, picking up trash and leaving the trash cans out, it's basically, most of the newer projects that have trash enclosures and they, they, they have to take it back and put it in their area. But if the trash cans are not being picked up or being put in their place, it's basically, it's our neighbors are doing this, and it happens everywhere. Greenhouse gas emission was mentioned with no project or all the other, other impacts, even if there is no project, we say, we're not doing anything tonight. That, there is a, there is a natural growth of greenhouse gas that we have to mitigate one way or the other. I think the way that everyone came out and talked about a project, this is not a project. We do not own any of these properties. The city is not in the process of building a project in South Glendale. This is a plan that was studying if these developments happened, what would happen to Glendale. And what we mentioned was no zone change. That means no zone, nowhere in this area is going to be changed except the, the tropical area, which is the hospital wants to improve their, their services. And that area, that tropical area is already San Fernando mixed-use area, which is the high-density area, so we're not increasing the density in that area either. It was mentioned the response time for our emergency services. Uh, it was mentioned the response time for, uh, our emergency services, the national, is, is national average four minutes? I mean, do we have that number?
Um, national average is, is, I believe, higher than four. I'll tell you what our average response times are, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, because when that came up, I did look it up. Um, for seventeen eighteen, our EMS calls was at three minutes and fifty-two, uh, seconds. Uh, for fire calls, four minutes and thirty seconds, and both are, are below, uh, from what I understand, the average national averages. And for the police department, it is four minutes and fifty-six, uh, seconds, and these are again averages. And I will say that, as you know, we continue to be, uh, the fourth safest city, uh, in California and the sixth in the nation.
Thank you for that. Um, and most of these, can we put that, that plan, that, that shows all the different zones in South Glendale, that, that part of the plan? I don't know, there is no number on it. That shows the new corridors and...
This one here, you, you want the one?
No, no, the one, the one that shows all the different... Th- this one, this is what I'm looking for. There you go. If you look at this area, the transit area that Mr. Councilmember Najarian was, was mentioning, all of these areas that is transit-oriented districts or developments, this is if the transit comes, if we have more, more buses, if we have the, the streetcar. In that case, that, that, uh, if the plan was approved the way it was with all the zone changes, it would have, it, the transit has to come in order for any of these, uh, zone changes to take place. But we are not approving any of the, the changes, so there is no increase in zoning anywhere. And, uh, uh, they said in last, past twelve years, there were 6,000 units approved. That was approved, as was mentioned, based on the downtown specific plan was, the EIR was adopted and op-zone was adopted as well, so that's why the projects went through and the units were, were being developed. Uh, a comment was made, do no harm. We are basically not changing the zoning, we're not doing any harm. The only area is the, um, the hospital area, and also we are downzoning, uh, five, six properties on the C3 area. So all the impacts that is indicated in there, and we, we, I asked Mr. Kraus, is based on the zone change. If there is no zone change, none of these negative impacts are going to happen. Uh, and one of the, the, the goals that we have is to create walking, uh, pedestrian-friendly environments between these different areas from Adams Hill to Glendale Avenue, for example, South Glendale Avenue, and create this walking, uh, areas that people walk more and bike more, and that's why they have all these, uh, plants for new trees and different streetscapes that it, it creates that, that, that environment. And rest of the corridors, these are going to be studied, nothing is being changed. Uh, everything has to come back to council. You will have more time to, to, uh, address your issues and concerns and voice your opinions on every, everything that's going to happen, not only with the council, because it has to go to Planning Commission first, and there is another, uh, venue that you can, you can voice your opinion on that. Uh, and also, it was mentioned that three million square feet of commercial, uh, downtown specific plan, the anticipated 1.8 or 1.9 mil-, 1.7 million square feet of, uh, commercial areas to be developed. Only 200,000 was developed, is that, am I correct? About 200,000 square feet of, uh, commercial was developed in downtown specific plan where there is all that room to, to, to grow, but that wasn't done, and I don't think anybody's even thinking about ma- building, uh, 200,000 square feet of commercial in South Glendale. So with that, I think all the, uh, the, the hillside areas are being protected with the, uh, the hillside development, uh, codes being implemented in there within, in our planning, with the zoning to be, to be, to be matched. And, uh, with that, I, I just want to hear what my, my colleagues have to say.
Okay. Mr. Devine?
Well, this was a very comprehensive document, I have to say, and I want to thank staff for, for all the, the years of work, I guess it will, has been. But it includes some very critical decisions which could potentially impact a huge portion of, what, what was the number? Fifteen to 30,000 people in, in South Glendale and impact their quality of life. Um, I have had concerns about the EIR, and I guess there are seven reasons why I, I don't want to, um, certify it. The justification was that, um, for these not being able to mitigate it was the fact that, um, uh, there were economic and soc- social and other benefits of the plan that outweighed the significant impacts. And I don't see that. I, I don't, uh, I, I don't understand that and I don't see it, that, um, uh, this is not going to, that the benefits are better than the impacts. Um, so therefore, I'm going to take Mr., our city attorney's advice and, um, and just say that, uh, I am not going to vote for certification of the EIR, um, and therefore, uh, I cannot approve the other items, although I have to say there are some of them that I would support and I do support, uh, but because I cannot support the EIR, um, I cannot approve those.
Okay. Thank you. I think I am the last one, in fact. Um, so thank you to everyone who came here today for this very important item, and thank you to staff for putting this together. You know, during the, um, public comment, I, I asked a few individuals if there were apartment dwellers or house dwellers, and I think someone yelled out, it doesn't matter. It does matter. Because Glendale is probably 90% apartment dweller, no, I'm sorry, South Glendale, that, that area is 90% apartment dweller. And of the first ten speakers, everyone was a, was a homeowner. I want to hear what the apartment dwellers want to say, that 90% of South Glendale. So don't tell me it doesn't matter. Of course it matters. But thankfully, of the last seven speakers, three were actually apartment dwellers. So we got a slight glimpse of how they feel about South Glendale, which appears not to be too different from homeho- homeowners, but at least now it's on the record. So that's why I kept asking. Um, with respect to, um, again, I, I don't want to regurgitate things that, uh, my colleagues spoke about, um, so touch upon some things that I were not touched upon. The parking problem in South Glendale is very acute, very true. And one of the speakers, I think it was, I'm not sure, it may have been Ms. Loos, it indicated that these nasty-looking, you know, aesthetically unpleasing homes were built mainly in the seventies and eighties with insufficient parking, and the cumulative impact of all of that is that we have a parking crisis in South Glendale. Ironically, anything that's built new, anything that's built within the last at least ten years, doesn't create a parking problem. They, they solve the pro- parking problem because they're well parked. I mean, the, the codes, the rules that we have in effect now don't allow for those things. So tha- that's that. Uh, stopping growth, again, I think it's clear that even if we don't attend to this issue, we ignore it and we pretend like, uh, we don't, we don't need to deal with it, growth is going to take place. Um, and then zo- zooming out and looking at, um, the totality of the situation with respect to housing, in Glendale and, and in Southern California in general, we're in the middle of a serious housing crisis. And that is a direct result of, not Glendale, but again, the cumulative impact of all the municipalities and all, and all the areas not building enough housing over time. And now you have a serious shortage, which is causing rents to go up. Yes, we have authorized, uh, the construction of, I don't know about six, but 4,000 apartments in, in downtown Glendale pursuant to a downtown specific plan that was adopted in 2006, mind you. And yes, uh, as a result, I'm sure, density has increased in downtown Glendale and population will have increased accordingly. Um, this, of course, comes after a decade of population loss in Glendale. If the nineteen ninety-nine 2000 census indicated a population of over 200,000 people, nearly 210,000 people, I'm sorry, nearly 200,000, 201,000 people, the 2009, 2010 census indicated a 10,000-person decline in the population. So, uh, a lot of, of the increase will merely be us catching up with our old numbers. Um, so the real true impact on the amount of traffic on the streets is questionable. I think we won't know until the next census. And I'm not by any means suggesting that all the housing problems of all of Southern California have to fall on the shoulders of Glendale. Somehow we have to build 1.2, what is it, 1.2, 1.3 million units that, uh, that we have a deficit of right now. I mean, we don't have to do that. We've done our part, no doubt. The city of Glendale has done its part. If you look at our neighboring cities, you'll see that we're, we're champions when it comes to that. Um, but there is this issue, there, there is the issue of, uh, apartment prices going up uncontrollably, and we can keep saying that, oh, you know, the, the construction of these 4,000 luxury apartments has resulted in the apartment prices going up, that is just not the case. That's, that, that runs against every, uh, economic rule of supply and demand, and, and as far as I know, our economic system is buil- built on that. One thing that does concern me a lot, and I have to respectfully disagree with my esteemed colleague, um, transportation, uh, transportation, transit aspect of it. Surely, we had that, um, summit the other day, and things, some things are in motion and some things are moving forward, but by no means are they even nearly close to resolving our transit problem. We don't have viable mass transit and transit in this city that would solve our, um, traffic and, and really getting around issues. Our Larry Zarian Transportation Center is located at the very possible southern tip of the city, which leaves out probably 99% of the population and their ability to really use, uh, that station and use whatever rail we have available to, to us. Um, there's a, you know, one component of, of what's in front of us is to deal with the, what, what commenced a TOD planning process. Uh, and I think that's to be welcomed. Motion initiating preparation of TOD zone for the Tropical TOD Center. That's a good thing. That's a good thing, because we're starting to initiate the preparation of a TOD zone. That, that's good. But overall, the transportation problem is there, transit problem is there, authorization of construction of thousands of new units in the absence of a viable transportation element is problematic. Uh, we, we, we love the concept of transportation-oriented development, but so far we've had development with a transportation element missing largely. And we don't want to, we don't want to continue doing that. But I'm not sure that what's in front of us is really authorizing the construction of thousands of units. It's merely setting a benchmark for, uh, an environmental standard, again, which is not going to somehow negate the necessity for additional environmental studies for anything, any, any construction that comes forth, uh, in this city. So, so I think I'm kind of aligned with some of my colleagues in terms of being for, being in support of some things and not necessarily being in support of others.
Well, I just want to ask the same question one more time, that we are not changing the zone, we are not adding any units, not 1,000 units, not 10,000 units, not 20,000 people, not 8,000 people, we're not increasing the traffic. Adopting the EIR with no zone change is like, almost like a no project to me. I mean, we're not, we're not increasing any of the zonings, except that tropical, which is already an SFMU zone, which is a San Fernando mixed-use zone, which is a higher zone than other areas. We're trying to accommodate the hospital, and we're trying to create that TOD zone, uh, for, for the transportation projects, if there's ever a project in that area, which is the poorest part of the, the south part of the, the, uh, the city. So I just want, don't want to create this issue that if we, uh, or paint this picture out there that if you are certifying the EIR, you're increasing the greenhouse gas emission tomorrow, you're increasing the traffic, you're going to build 20,000 units, and this is not happening. There is no zone change. So everything stays the same, because I think the, the misconception out there was, everything that was indicated or mentioned by the, by the speakers is part of that motion. The motion that you are recommending is addressing all the concerns they have, which is basically no increase in zoning and no new developments. And we are not approving any projects here tonight. No project is being approved. There is no 4,000 units or 10,000 units. This plan is not doing that. I just want to make sure one more time that that's what we're doing.
In a nutshell, uh, the EIR is an informational document. You are not approving any of those units. It's telling you if those units were built, this is the impact.
As opposed to the DSP, which was those things that my colleague just listed.
As opposed to the DSP. When it said, these are the impacts, and here's the zoning to allow you to go do that. So, and, and you are correct, last, uh, point I think you made, you are correct. We are recommending that you direct us to amend the plan to take out those suggestions of density increase and any density change at all, so that it stays as is. Okay?
Any questions? Any additional questions for staff? Do, does anyone have a motion or introduction?
Mr. Mayor, uh, I would suggest the motion that, uh, I guess it's nine B one, first, the resolution certifying the EIR and adopting the statement of overrides, and then after that, the a- actions can be taken, uh, together. The, I'd just point out that nine B two, uh, the motion adopting Tropical Center Plan as amended is, is a resolution. There's a replacement resolution, it's, there's no change to it whatsoever. We just put it into a resolution, uh, because it's a, that's a more formal, uh, although it's a policy document, it's a more formal approval. Everything else can be approved together. I would also note that the...
I'm sorry, which, which item is that, six?
Two.
Oh, s- but it's, it's worded as a motion.
Right, but it's a resolution. Uh, we changed it to a resolution.
Okay, you changed it to a resolution.
Yeah, there, there's no change to the actual approval, it's just making it a more formal, uh, approval.
Okay.
And then, uh, so two, three, four, five and six can be taken together if council so desires, and then seven is an introduction or ordinance, um, to downzone those six parcels.
And before you make a motion, Mr. Najarian, uh, just one more clarification, that those 22 properties that were being added to downtown specific plan that would upzone those, those properties, those are not part of this, this project either.
They are not. Uh, uh, at your direction, we did not include that boundary change.
So before we, you make the introduction, the, whatever references there are in, in this report to 8,000, 8,000 units, is it?
There, there are different, up to 10.
What's the context, yeah? What is, what's, what's that context again? Can you restate it? What is, I mean, eight to 10, you're saying, so what about them?
That's what the EIR studied on, in terms of a full build-out if...
So EIR is based on a build-out of eight to 10,000?
It's, it's studied that as a, as a maximum, you know, build-out.
Right.
If all the things happen, including as Mr. Lansky said, the transit that is intended to be part of that.
Right. So if transit were there, if, I mean, these are just...
And, and if, if...
These are conditions, these are...
And if the council in the future decides to consider those future zone changes, but as you've all pointed out, it's not part of the approval tonight.
Right.
And in order to do even 500 units in the areas, in those corridors, you need to change the zone that you're not changing right now.
Right, like was done with the DSP. Okay. I'll entertain a motion at this point.
I'll move nine B one.
Second.
May we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Agajian?
Yes.
Devine?
No.
Barvetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
I'll move nine, B two, three, four, five and six.
Second.
May we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Agajian?
Yes.
Devine?
No.
Barvetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
And I'll introduce the ordinance at nine B seven.
And that's been introduced. Thank you. That's it on this item. Next, we have item nine D.
Director of Community Development regarding appeal of Design Review Board, DRB, approval of DRB case number PDR 1702331 located at 1849... approval of DRB case number PDR 1702331, located at eighteen forty-nine Los Encinos Avenue. One, motion to sustain the DRB's decision of September fourteen, two thousand seventeen, to approve the application, but with modified conditions of approval. Two, motion to sustain the DRB's decision of September fourteen, two thousand seventeen, to approve the application with original conditions, with no modifications. Three, motion to continue the matter, directing the city attorney to draft findings, reversing the DRB's decision and denying the project.
Okay, just going to, yes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, so that it's not a Phil Lansfield, fully a Phil Lansfield evening tonight, we're gonna send this to Eileen Babacani from Community Development, Eileen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council, I'm Eileen Babacani, the case planner for the subject case before you, which is the Appeal of Design Review Case Number PDR 1702331, for the project located at eighteen forty-nine Los Encinos Avenue. Going over the, the timeline of the project, the applicant, Mr. Zohrabian, submitted the subject design review application on February seven, two thousand seventeen, to demolish the existing one-story, nine hundred forty-eight square foot, single-family resident with a detached two-car garage, and to construct a new store, new two-story, three thousand two hundred sixty-four square foot, single-family resident with a new attached two-car garage. The case was presented to the Design Review Board on September fourteen, two thousand seventeen, with the staff recommendation to approve the case with five conditions. The DRB voted for two-one to approve the application with seven conditions. On September twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, eighteen neighbors appealed the design review decision. The project site is a ten thousand one hundred forty square foot interior lot with frontage on Los Encinos Avenue, located in R one R Zone Floor Area Ratio District Two. The subject lot is twice larger than the average five, five thousand seventy-one square foot lot size within the neighborhood. This slide shows you the aerial photo of the subject property and the neighborhood. The next slide shows you the view of the existing house from Los Encinos Avenue, and you can see the existing site plan in there. This slide shows the condition of existing house. And to provide you with some background about the project and the neighborhood context, the project site is located in a neighborhood consists of one, two, and three-story houses. There are six two-story and one three-story house out of twenty-six houses within three hundred linear feet of the subject property, including adjacent properties. Average lot size in this boundary is five thousand seventy-one square feet, and average house size is one thousand three hundred twenty square feet. An average front setback is fifteen feet and a half. The subject proposal would be three thousand two hundred sixty-one square foot two-story house with sixteen feet and nine inches front setback on a ten thousand one hundred forty square foot lot. There are eight oak trees on the side, and one California second more tree within twenty feet of the site, right on the public right-of-way. All nine trees will be maintained, and an indigenous tree report with protection guidelines was submitted by the applicant, and the city's urban forestry section reviewed the report, evaluated the site, and supported the proposed development with the standard conditions. You can see in this slide that the proposed site planning appropriately sited in the existing flat path and will be extended towards the east of the site to maintain the existing indigenous trees. The new house will have twenty-six feet and five inches setback from the west property line, fifteen feet and nine inches setback from the east property line at the sides, and fifteen feet and five inches setback from the north property line to the rear, which are more than require ten-foot interior, interior setback in compliance with the zoning code. At the DRB hearing, DRB supported the subject case, and board members agreed that a two-story house is a reasonable design concept to, to maintain the existing oak trees. The size of the proposed, proposed house is appropriate for a double-size lot in comparison to the existing smaller lots in the neighborhood. The proposed house is a well-designed building and represent high-quality materials, and the mass and scale of the proposed building is broken up appropriately. However, DRB recognized that the massing, height, and privacy issues of the subject proposal and imposed conditions of approval to address these issues. Ultimately, the board voted to approve the project for two-one with seven conditions. I'm going over the conditions of approval. Condition one states, lower the first-floor plate height to ten feet and the second-floor plate height to eight feet, and slash or implement condition two. And condition two states, relocate the bedroom from above the garage to the west side of the second floor, and slash implement condition one. With these conditions, DRB decided to provide alternative condition with stating and/or in this condition to provide an opportunity for the owner to either reduce the overall height of the building by reducing the plate heights, or relocate, relocate the second-floor bedroom above the garage to reduce the mass. Condition three states, if only condition one is proposed and the second floor remains over, over the garage, this wing, which is the garage wing, must be depressed into the ground to have the garage floor level be one foot below the proposed level, while also meeting the plate height requirements of condition one for both floors. And condition four, eliminate the second-floor balconies proposed at the front and rear facade to address the privacy issue. And you can see this, these three balconies in this slide. And condition five, reduce the roof pitch from four to twelve feet to three to twelve feet, to reduce the height a little bit further. And condition six, which you notice there are nine protected trees on the side, and within twenty feet of the site, this condition is a standard condition from the city's urban forestry section to obtain an indigenous tree permit prior to issuance of any building permits. And condition seven is to provide color, natural color palette for the stock of- The appellant's main argument focus, focuses on mass and scale, impacts on the privacy of the surrounding-
In a minute, I'm going to drown in this pool, surrounded-
-neighborhood, application of the municipal code and the Hillside Design Guideline, failure of the Design Review Board and the city staff to conduct a fair deliberation during the hearing, and to issue clearly stated and binding condition, and request to modify conditions of approval based on these arguments. I tried to simplify and summarize the, the appellant's requests, because their main request is changing the approved condition by the board. So, I'm going over one, each condition, and I'm going to tell you what is their request and what is the staff recommendation for each condition. So, for the mass and scale concern, the, the appellant's request, condition one and two, to be changed and slash or from the condition, and staff agrees with these changes since modified conditions are clear and follow the board intention. Staff recommends condition one to be modified to say, lower the first-floor plate height to ten feet and the second-floor plate height to eight feet, with implementation of condition two. And condition two will be relocate the bedroom from the, above the garage to the west side of the second floor. Why the condition one will be implemented?
I'll ask you a question.
Yes?
So, I, I'm reading the appellant's request that says, first floor to be ten feet and the second-floor plate height to be eight feet, to reduce the overall building height by two feet, and maximum allowable building height shall be twenty-five foot, six inches, and implement condition two, with the changes that the applicant is making, am I correct? Are they the applicant? Or they're the appellant, I'm always-
You're right, the, the app, the, no, this is, they are neighbors that they are, they-
No, no, I understand, so by, when the architect makes all these changes, what is the building height?
The proposed building height is twenty-seven and six inches.
Okay.
So, with these changes, by reducing the plate height, the overall height will be twenty-five feet and six inches.
Basically what the appellant's wanted, in the-
Yes, but there are also other condition about reducing the, changing the roof pitch. With that, also, there'll be another reduction from the overall height. So, that's why staff thinks, to mention the exact number for the overall height, it's not inappropriate, because we don't know how much reduction is gonna happen by changing the roof pitch. That's gonna be maybe something the, the architect can tell us, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
For condition three, the appellant's request, condition three to be changed to exclude, if only condition one is proposed and the second floor remains over the garage, and the, and also their request in the condition three should stand on its own, and it shouldn't be contingent on the implementation of condition one. Staff believes if the room above the garage is removed, condition three is not necessary. So, we're recommending to delete condition three from the record of decision. In regards to mass and scale concern, again, the appellant's request that condition five of the DRB Record of Decision to be modified to clearly state the resulting net reduction in the overall building height and resulting maximum allowable building height, when the roof pitch is reduced from four to twelve feet to three to twelve feet. Staff does not recommend any change to this condition, because this condition somewhat will reduce the height, and the exact number of the reduction, as I mentioned, will be determined in the revised drawing. In regards to the privacy concern, DRB found that imposing condition four to eliminate balconies will eliminate potential encroachment on the neighbor's privacy to the rear, side, and across the street to the, to the south. In addition, DRB agreed that due to the site topography, the proposed two-story house will not look over homes and outdoor spaces of the neighboring property, properties at the rear, which is the north side. And also, the proposed house is sufficiently set back from the adjacent properties to the east and west side, as you can see on this slide and this section drawing. Staff does not recommend also change of condition four as requested by the app, appellants. They are requesting the condition to be changed to say, eliminate second-floor balconies proposed at the front and rear facade, so that no second, second-floor balconies are allowed on any facade of the building. And since staff does not expect new balconies be presented by the applicant for the staff review and approval, and then if that happens, the proposal must be presented to the Design Review Board. That's another reason that the staff doesn't think that, doesn't think they need to change this condition.
Oh, just one more question. So, the second-floor balcony, is that, is it one, part of the condition to move that, that mass over the garage?
That was the condition number two.
Okay, so-
And that's gonna happen, that's, that's part of, that's condition two, which is says, remove the bedroom above the garage to the second floor at the rear.
Right, but you have to remove the balcony in order to put that second bedroom?
Balcony is gonna be removed by this condition, yes.
Okay, so, but the condition four says eliminate the second-floor balconies proposed at the front and rear facade. Are there any more balconies besides the one that is going to be removed?
No, there are three balconies that are going to be removed, two at the front and one at the rear. This, this condition includes all balconies for this building.
Okay, so you don't wanna change it, okay. Thank you.
No problem. And the appellant is also requesting for additional condition to be added to the Record of Decision regarding the privacy issue, to state that remove any second-level rear-facing bedroom windows and use opaque or transalent glass window, or hide windows at the second-level rear-facing bathroom windows. The board determined that the elimination of the rear balcony, which is condition four by itself, would address the privacy issues. And all remaining rear-facing windows at the second floor after imposing condition number four will be bathroom windows. And privacy wouldn't be considered by looking from bathroom windows. And bathroom windows traditionally have frosted-glass windows. By the way, council may consider imposing a condition for these windows to use frosted glass for, for only bathroom windows, because as you see on this slide, this is the rear elevation, and after removing the balcony, there is one balcony door that will be removed, a part of the balcony. All other three windows are bathroom windows. So, basically, there is no bedroom window at the rear elevation.
That bedroom has other windows, or not?
They have other windows facing sides, not at the, not rear.
The room that you were asking to balcony window to be taken out, that has another window, that room, because-
Yes, let me go back to this rendering.
Does that room has another window, it's just-
It has another window facing the side, I'm going to show if I get there.
Because the room should have a window anyway, I mean, you can't eliminate all of them.
Okay, if you look at this slide, which shows rear elevation, north side, there is a, does it have a pointer, so I can point? Oh, yeah. So, this, this is the balcony door that I was talking about?
Yes.
There is a window on the side.
Oh, alright.
Facing rear.
Okay. Yeah, but if you go back there, but you're gonna put that second floor, you're removing the mass from above the garage and putting it on that balcony, right? So, you're gonna block that, that, that window as well. So, the only window they have is facing the front, the street.
Which will be-
I think the architect can answer that later, okay.
Which will be this one, which will be this window, and you're talking about this window facing the street.
Right, so the, the, the master bedroom, or whatever that bedroom is, will only have one window in the front?
Maybe, I, I don't know, the architect may have some revised drawing based on the condition. Okay, I was on, okay, I'm almost finishing. For the appellant's argument for the compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood and application of the municipal code and Hillside Design Guidelines, staff believes DRB- of the municipal code and hillside design guidelines, staff believes DRB appropriately considered the proposal consistency with the city zoning code and design guide, hillside design guidelines by imposing condition of approval, which I mentioned. However, the appellant's request to add specific wording for condition seven to def, to define a specific color for the stucco finish. Staff believes modifying this condition to call a specific color is not necessary since DRB traditionally relies on staff to work with the applicant, and this allows the applicant to choose a color to meet hillside design guidelines, which obviously will not be a bright, bright white color. And, um, also there is, if I go back to this, also there is one more, um, request, basically, or challenge the applicant, the, the, the appellant's had, was about DRB and planning staff failed to enforce the applicant's allotted time limit for presenting and rebuttal the case at the, at the DRB hearing, and the response, the time limits for the applicants and speakers during the DRB hearing are at the discretion of the DRB chairperson, and the chairperson may give more time to speakers or applicants than announced in the hearing. And at the conclusion of my presentation, staff recommends that the city, the city council uphold the DRB decision with the following modified condition, which I went over them already, and also other alternative motion are included in the, if council wants to take a different motion, including motion to sustain the design review board decision with original condition or motion to deny the design review project or any other alternative motion city council may consider. This is my presentation and I'm available for your questions.
I have a question, can you show us the slide that represents the house with the bedroom moved to the other location above the, the one above the garage? Where is it going and can you show me the slide that shows that?
Um, I can show you the location of proposed bedroom above the garage.
It seems like all the pictures are, have the, the bedroom over the garage, and I don't see one with the front elevation, I think it's, is it going in the front on the second level?
Okay, this, maybe this is the best.
Page eleven of this new packet that they gave us?
I have page eleven, maybe.
Maybe this is the best slide, but again, architect may have some other drawing to clearly shows the location of the new bedroom. The bedroom above the garage is this one that we're talking about?
Yes.
So the conditions from the board was either keep it or, um, remove it, so they had option, the applicant had option for keeping the bedroom above the garage, but, but with, with this modified condition that staff is recommending, this bedroom above the garage is gonna be removed to the rear second floor.
So if you look at the above, how, drawing?
So there's not gonna be any massing in this area.
It's gonna be on the left side there?
Mm-hmm.
On the, on the top?
Uh, probably here in this area, but I don't know.
Is there, what's there now, balcony or?
There's a balcony there, yes.
Any other questions? There aren't none, okay, uh, thank you for now. We're gonna open the public hearing and I'm gonna invite the appellant's up, and I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if the appellant's have a single speaker or multiple speakers, is there, is there one person that would like to take more time than the others?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so what, if you don't mind, will you tell me who the speakers are, I'll find your cards.
I'm speaking first, my name's Paul Longstaff.
Okay, Mr. Longstaff, I have your card and?
And, um, Meiling is gonna speak second.
Meiling Pope, uh-huh, and Sally Nielsen? And you're with them as well? Yeah, only the ones.
I'm not on either, I'm an aide.
I think there's like eighteen appellants, so.
Okay, so, okay, I'm just trying to get some order to this.
I understand, I think what they said was two people would take the laboring order on the presentation.
Two people wanna take the most, okay, how much time do you think you'll need to present the case? God have mercy on us. Okay. All right, not twenty, we're not gonna go to twenty-five minutes, let me tell you that, twenty minutes, I'm gonna cut you off at twenty, there's no need to be repetitive, if different neighbors have the same issue, there's no need to repeat the same thing, so why don't we start with Paul Longstaff and Meiling Pope?
Can I just lay this in front of the gate, is that okay?
Of course.
Just, that has to be part of the record, and we'll have to keep that, is that okay?
Uh, is that okay? You can have it.
Okay, reset, reset the time.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Sinanian, uh, Sinanian, I'm sorry, and esteemed council members, as I said, my name's Paul Longstaff, my wife Martha and I, I would like to thank you for taking the time to hear our appeal. Uh, we live at eighteen sixty Alpha Road, one of the three homes that bordered the northern property line of the proposed development, and we sent out a physical copy of our appeal package as well as an email with all of the same details, and I hope you've had a chance to review the materials. We'd also like to thank those of you who took the time out of your busy schedules to personally visit our neighborhood. We're here to appeal the, uh, well, I'm not gonna say that, we're objecting to some conditions that as they stand fail to stipulate clear and binding directives due to ambiguous language in the DRB record of decision. Our appeal aims to clarify that language, especially conditions one, two, and five. For instance, condition one, as stated, shall lower the first floor plate height to ten feet and the second floor plate height to eight feet and/or implement condition two. As it stands, condition one does not provide a clear and binding directive, it's not clear to which parts of the building these height restrictions will apply, plus the phrase and/or makes this directive optional and therefore non-binding. It's critical that height restrictions be clear so that they can be enforced, these restrictions ensure that the height of the entire structure remain compatible with the existing neighborhood pattern as specified, excuse me, as specified in the standards section in chapter thirty dot four seven, design review of the Glendale Municipal Code. We're asking that height restrictions of condition one be implemented throughout the entire structure with a clearly stated net reduction in overall building height of two feet. We also ask that the phrase and/or implement condition two is eliminated, this ensures that condition one is binding and enforceable. This brings us to condition two, which states relocate the bedroom from above the garage to the west side of the second floor and/or implement condition one. Again, the phrase and/or makes this condition optional, non-binding and unenforceable. It's that room above the garage so proposed that is most problematic for at least three directly adjacent homes and contributes to the overwhelming mass of the design. Uh, this did not go unnoticed by board member Chartchen, who stated that standing there in front of the garage, looking at those story poles, the mass was the first thing that popped out at me. And it was board member Benleyan that stated, the room over the garage just looks awkward, it's creating that additional mass, if that whole room disappears, this thing will be way nicer, whatever you can do to help on that side, I think that would be really appreciated by the neighbors and by us. It's the room above the garage that will reduce western sunlight for eighteen fifty-seven Los Encinos, it's the room above the garage, as you can see from our photo, that will tower over our backyard with views into our daughter's bedroom. It's the room above the garage that dominates eighteen fifty-six Alpha Road's entire back property line, obstructing every available inch of airflow and view from their private open space. So for condition two, we're requesting that the phrase and/or implement condition one be eliminated. We believe in, that implementing both condition one and two with the modifications suggested by staff significantly addresses the heart of our appeal. Further, we believe that if conditions one and two, as modified as staff recommends, would bring the proposed development in compliance with hillside design guidelines and provisions outlined in chapter thirty dot four seven. Uh, condition five, as stated, shall reduce the roof pitch from four to twelve to three to twelve. We're asking that condition five is revised to clearly state the resulting net reduction in overall building height. This is a further reduction to the height discussed in condition one. I'll conclude here by stating that our appeal is quite modest and we feel a reasonable solution to mitigating the excessive mass and height featured in this design. We are encouraged to learn the planning department staff has requested the motion to sustain the approval of this design, but to modify the conditions consistent with our appeal. Simply put, we ask that the plate height reductions for the first and second floors be implemented and ambiguous language is removed from the DRB record of decision. We ask that the second floor bedroom above the garage be relocated and the wording of condition two be modified to remove the phrase and/or implement condition one, and we also ask that condition five is revised to clearly state the resulting net height reduction from the change in roof pitch ratio. And I'll end with a quote from board member Maldekian, who said, overall, I think it is massive in comparison to the neighborhood and where it's going. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Ms. Meiling Pope?
Thank you, we have a board too, we'd like to place some fun, that's okay.
Apparently if you put it down, we're gonna have to keep it, okay, so long as you're okay with that. Thank you.
Um, could we pause on time while I just pass this out?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I think we're ready.
All right, great. Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of the city council, really appreciate your time tonight, uh, listening to our appeal. My name is Meiling Pope, uh, my husband and I live at eighteen fifty-six Alpha Road, and we represent a total of eighteen co-appellants that are opposing this project. Thanks very much for your time and thank you for visiting the area to see the project as well. So, uh, we're united Glendale neighbors and residents, we oppose this proposed design at eighteen forty-nine Los Encinos Avenue, um, and we filed the appeal together, we've also started an online petition that's gathered over nine hundred fifty signatures as of today and counting. We also have involvement from some local organizations as well as grassroots support across the city of Glendale, and I'd like to take a moment, if I may, to point out that many of the supporters tonight are wearing bright green t-shirts, sitting in the audience, if they'd like to take a moment just to stand up really quick, indicate your support for our appeal and opposition of this project, thank you so much, um, you can see there's a lot of local community interest in this, in opposing the project. Um, so this project really poses a number of harms, um, to the neighborhood and causes great hardship to the neighbors living nearby and distributed throughout the neighborhood as well, it's really about the excessive size, mass, and scale, which you can see from the photos in this board in front of me, uh, that's what we wanted to show you. And it definitely harms neighbors by cutting off access to sunlight, open space, and airflow, we'll see plenty of photos about that. The two-story design also threatens an indigenous oak tree that's on the subject property, and also there's municipal code that clearly states this project should be clearly reviewed against municipal code that really references and emphasizes compatibility with the existing neighborhood. So let's talk about excessive size, mass, and scale. Here again, a look at the neighborhood survey, you saw this image before, outlined in the red is the subject property, and the blue would be the appellant's properties, you can see many are adjacent and others are distributed throughout. Another view, uh, Google Maps overhead view, again, in the red, subject property, and in the blue, um, appellant's properties outlined. So let's take a quick look at the existing neighborhood pattern, you can see very cozy, charming, small homes on small lots, really nestled into the natural beauty of the woodlands. More homes looking the same, sort of have a quaint cozy storybook feel to them, small homes on small lots. And here's some look at the streetscapes, uh, where we step back a little bit and, and look at the view, um, on Los Encinos on Alpha Road, and you can see again mostly small homes with low profile and small lots. On the top photo, you'll see there's red lines, and that's what I've put there to indicate where the story poles are for this project, they're too faint in the photo on their own, so I wanted to emphasize them for you. More photos, um, of the subject property, so let's take a look, in the upper left photo, we have the existing house as it has been for decades, totally fits in, totally compatible uh, with the personality of the neighborhood, though it is on a double wide lot, we understand that. Photo in the upper right is when the story poles went in, this photo was taken the day the story poles were put up, as it drew attention from many of the surrounding neighbors. Photo on the bottom is our attempt at taking the rendering provided in the information packet, superimposing it on the photo we took in the upper right corner, so that we can make it relatively consistent, um, but we did this really to show you a realistic view of what this project would look like in the actual context of the neighborhood, because as you can see, the architectural drawings simply don't show any relationship at all to the other homes in the area, they do not realistically reflect the project's excessive size, mass, and scale. Now let's talk about some of the hardships it causes for neighbors, so this is, we're gonna dive into some photos showing what it's like to experience this project from different properties that are adjacent. Here we are, standing in the backyard of one eight five six Alpha, this is my home, uh, my husband and I have been living there for over ten years. Standing right at our property line in our backyard, looking directly into the project story poles, again, when I'm standing there, I feel as if I'm actually in the construction itself, I feel like if I take a step forward, I'm practically in their second floor. And I also wanna emphasize that that photo in the upper right is really the front facade of our home, gives you a sense, again, of a smaller home on a smaller lot. I do wanna point out that one of the story poles, um, with that red arrow there, is actually eleven feet away from our rear property line, and yet we've heard, um, in some of the staff report, that the setback is fifteen and a half feet, I'm not sure I understand that, I don't think it's uniform, so I wanted to point out that part of this project actually does encroach closer. More photos again, with the red lines outlining where the story poles go. More photos again, uh, from the backyard of our property, you're getting the idea. Uh, now we're gonna take a look at the adjacent neighbor at one eight six zero Alpha, so they're also actually north of the property as well, and here again, standing in their backyard, looking directly into the project, you see the story poles again loom over this property to the north. And here we are, standing in another neighbor's home, one eight five seven Los Encinos, uh, standing inside their house, looking out, uh, one of the few windows they have on this side, looking into the story poles again, which completely loom over their property and will actually be blocking access to sunlight. Here we are in another neighbor's home, standing in the backyard of one eight four one Los Encinos, which is west of subject property, uh, again, the story poles show that when the structure goes in, it's gonna block access to sunlight as well. So let's talk about the oak tree that's on the property that we're very much concerned about, um, it is a protected coast live oak, that was the Glendale tree ordinance there that I wanted to share. So looking at the site plan, we can see here, um, the proposed design from an overhead view, and we can see the green canopy of oak tree number nine at the rear of the property, right in front of my home, um, is a protected coast live oak, and its canopy actually overlaps the proposed construction by a great deal. The red line indicating the outline of the proposed building, and the blue line indicating where I believe there's a proposed, uh, wall of some kind, maybe a, a lower wall going in, um, for this project. So I kinda wanna show you, um, what oak tree number nine actually looks like, if you see it in person, so this is me standing at my backyard again, looking directly into oak tree number nine, which is right in front of our home, a little bit off to the side, but you can see with the outlines here that the story poles show it goes directly up into the crown of the tree, and I wanna mention that during the DRB meeting back in September of twenty seventeen, the arborist who was at the meeting actually significantly underestimated the pruning at around ten percent. Uh, we have independent opinions from two certified arborists that say otherwise, that it's closer to forty to fifty percent pruning, uh, causing potentially significant damage, if not death, to this protected oak tree. Outline here, just showing you what the tree actually is, there's a lot of foliage, a lot of crown. I also wanna mention that earlier this year in March twenty eighteen, I also want to mention that earlier this year, in March 2018, City of Glendale, the Community Development Department, actually issued a proposed mitigated negative declaration about a property that was quite similar, existing structures that are being torn down to make way for a larger home on a larger lot. I think it was around a four thousand square foot home on maybe even larger than ten thousand square foot lot. And in this declaration, which is signed and dated by the City of Glendale, it says, "When construction occurs within ten feet of the tree trunk, it inevitably will be damaged by construction." Just wanna call that out. And so again, what we see here, standing from my property, looking down to oak tree number nine, is that the story poles are within ten feet of the oak tree trunk. And if you account for the fact that scaffolding will step back even closer to the tree, this is a real significant issue here that threatens the health of this oak tree. I wanna share some of the letters we received from the independent certified arborist, which I passed out to you. You should have them in front of you. So we have two letters, independent certified arborists. One is actually Mr. William McKinley, who was formerly the City of Glendale arborist. He was with the Glendale Community Service and Parks Department for over twenty-five years. We invited him to our property, to view oak tree number nine from our property. We also shared the public information packet on this project with him, so he could review that as well. And his assessment is really that the story poles, again, placed within roughly ten feet of the tree's trunk, appears forty to fifty percent of the tree's limbs and branches would require removal, significantly more than what was discussed at the DRB meeting. He also says that large clearance pruning would be significant, and large pruning wounds would be created. Again, close to fifty percent of the tree's crown would probably be removed. And ultimately, he says that the pruning is likely to impact the health of this tree, as well as construction and other factors, and would likely result in decline and death of this protected tree. We have a second independent arborist, certified arborist, who said much the same thing. Encroachment and clearance and pruning to oak number nine is really due to proposal for a second-story structure, and this really needs to be addressed. Again, he also felt that nearly fifty percent of the crown would be lost, and this would be a serious stressor to the oak tree's health and condition.
Can I, can I ask you a question? May I?
Yeah. May we pause my time? I'm sorry.
Yeah, pause the time.
Right. Pardon me. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Devine?
Is this oak tree number nine on the side where the bedroom is above the garage? Or not?
Yes, it is on that same side, yep. It's not directly in front of that existing bedroom in front of the garage, but it's very close proximity.
So if the bedroom is moved, that would help? That would be, as far as built, I noticed in this one letter, it says that when construction is going on, then of course they have to go higher to the tree. Is, would that, is that where it is?
It is not that close to the bedroom. It's a little bit offset from it. So if we were looking at the house together from my rear property, you can see in this photo that this mass down here represents that bedroom over the garage. And so that's, the tree is actually further to the left.
So putting, moving the bedroom to the other side of the house is not gonna help this situation?
I don't think necessarily it would address that. I think it's more the fact that just the height of the overall structure is really the key issue. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's restart the time.
Thank you. So let's dive into some Glendale municipal code. We heard earlier in the review of our case by staff that they weren't able to come up with a condition regarding the placement of our windows or the treatment of the rear windows due to privacy. Well, what I'd like to share here is a screenshot from the Glendale Municipal Code website, taken today. And that shows in the blue, the language around privacy, that privacy is really being judged by some of these rooms, like family room, library, great room, and so forth. What I wanna share is immediately after that, we have the last sentence here that says, "For new development and remodeling in the R1R zone, which we're in, consideration shall be given to placement of windows in new development vis-à-vis placement of windows in adjacent residential buildings." So our home would constitute an adjacent residential building, as well as our neighbors on both sides. And so the DRB does have the authority to come up with a condition around placement of windows. We also wanna share, you know, additional municipal code in the same part, except moving to Part D. Again, some language around assuring, ensuring that design is compatible with the character inherent in the neighborhood, ensuring a positive design relationship with adjacent developments, and really reviewing each single residential family project in terms of its specific impact, specifically massing, scale, height, setback, and again, at the very end, window location. So this specifically speaks to the authority that the DRB had, with a language here saying the review authority. We also wanna point to some open questions we have about the information that was provided in the public information packet. As we reviewed a lot of these documents, it appeared, it became clear to us that there was some discrepancies, some conflicting measurements provided, and we don't understand why. For example, looking at this neighborhood survey, you'll see at the very top, and this comes out of the public information packet, the top-line item is the proposed project at 1849 Los Encinos. It shows the setback is fifteen feet, but elsewhere is shown as fifteen point five feet. It shows the floor area is three thousand seventy-six square feet. Elsewhere, it's shown as three thousand two hundred sixty-one square feet, and then again, elsewhere is three thousand two hundred sixty-four square feet. If you look at the FAR floor area ratio, two figures are provided, point three zero and point three two. Some may say this is a rounding error, but we believe when you're looking at measurements that are defined down to the tenth and hundredth of a decimal, any change to the number is On the next page of the neighborhood survey, again, some other questions we had about information that didn't seem consistent. Looking at the property at 1838 Los Encinos Avenue, which is within three hundred linear feet of the subject property, you can see here it's shown as having zero setback. Well, when we look at Google Maps, this is the front of 1838 Los Encinos. To me, this does not appear to be zero setback, so I'm not sure why that might be. Maybe I don't understand the definition of setback, but my assumption is there's some setback here. Further, looking at property number twenty-three, 1841 Los Encinos Avenue, is defined as a two-story building here. Elsewhere, in the public information packet and the topographic surveys supplied by the architect, it's identified as a one-story house. Also, in the architect's own drawings, it's identified as a one-story house as well. So that brings into question, how much can we rely on the information provided in the public information packet, especially knowing that the DRB relied on it when it made its decision to approve this design? Ultimately, we wanna wrap up by saying, we're really looking for simple and straightforward remedies. Yes, we provided a lot of info. We wanted to come prepared so that we could speak with you in a respectful manner. But we're really just asking you to reduce the excessive mass, size, and scale, sustain the conditions that we asked for, which staff also is recommending and curcuring with, but in some cases to go further to eliminate excessive mass, size, and scale, to bring it in line with the existing neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good question. Okay, folks, extend forty, please, and we have, we have many cards to go through. So anyone else here to speak on behalf of the appellant or in support of the appellant? No one else? That you submitted a card? What's your name?
Tony Maderas.
Mr. Maderas, I'll find your card. Why don't you come up forward? You have two minutes.
I'm gonna be short. I live at 1874 Los Encinos Avenue, half a block away from this project. Found out about it when I opened up my window and I saw the little flags over there, and I went, whoa, you know, the circus or something. Well, that was then. I, I support the neighbors in the size, the massive size of the place that I, it's immense. In the presentation that the young lady gave, they had my house up there, 1874 Los Encinos. It looks massive. It's one-story. It leans against the mountain. So what you see is, it looks like a two-story building. I only live in the top. Furthermore, the other thing is, not only do I own my property, but I own the property behind us. That's how most of the homeowners in that area are. There's, we own two properties. So basically, my property, my house, takes about a quarter of the whole place, as opposed to this one, which is, you know, you're trying to put a whole pound into a sixteen-ounce bag. You can't. So that, I wanted to clear that up and make sure that you guys knew everything.
Thank you. Okay? There's a question. Please.
Between your two properties, you said you have one up against your other side?
Yeah, it goes all the way up to the fire road.
Right. So between your two properties, how many square feet is that? The land, land square?
Land, I don't know. Living space, seventeen hundred feet, so.
Land between, you said you own the property behind you as well?
Yes. Yeah, I own mine, and then halfway through, I own up to the fire road. The thing is, it's a very steep incline, so that's why you're, yeah.
What was your address again?
1874 Los Encinos. In the presentation that they first gave, I was at home watching you guys on TV. And I saw my, I saw my house, and I got pissed off, and I went, wait a minute, they're using my house to push this? So, you know, I, I wanted to really clear the record and make sure that you guys knew, 'cause you're really getting scammed. I mean, you know, my house is only a quarter of the property. The whole rest is the hill. That's the beauty of the place.
What's your address again?
1874 Los Encinos Avenue. And yeah, like I said, when I saw it on TV in my house, it was up there, I went, honey, come here, check this out. And it was like, huh. And I just, I was glad I didn't get a ticket coming down here. I was so, I was so glad.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Oh, I guess, folks, come on. Go ahead.
1874, right?
1874 Los Encinos Avenue, yeah. It's a beautiful house. It looks from the outside. I had it painted, and they had to put scaffolding to do the whole thing. It does look really big. It's only the top level. The bottom is my gem.
Thank you, sir.
So, thank you so much.
Thank you. So I assume all these other cards are for the applicant respondent? Okay. And is there, well, that's why I asked. I said, who else is speaking for the appellant? What's your name? Who's?
I mean, I think the confusion may have been people may be just speaking out to voice their opinion one way or the other, but none of us are speaking for.
Okay, well, I just wanna take them in a batch.
Sure.
And then move on to that. So if you're speaking for the appeal or in support of the appeal, tell me who you are and.
Ari Shahjani.
Okay. Ari Shahjani. Okay, two minutes.
Thank you. Not an appellant, just to be clear, just supporting the appellant as a public speaker. Nice to see all of you again. In the last year and one month, there have been three appeals like this one, where a large home has been proposed to be built in an area where the homes are predominantly smaller. And particularly last year in August, there was an appeal also for a double-wide lot in the other part of Verdugo Woodlands. And you guys mandated a lower square footage. Even though the lot itself was large and could support more square footage for the home, you have to look at the, the homes in the area, which are predominantly smaller they were in that case, and certainly are in this case. I just wanna highlight what the appellant said about inherent quality or characteristics of the neighborhood. Those are words in the zoning code, so you really have to consider. And that's really a holistic approach. And when you look at the details and the numbers of a house, it might look and sound good, but you need, you know, human, and the human eye, to look at the homes that are surrounding this home, and then look at this home and see that in terms of the mass and the scale, there's a lot of disconnect. And so I just wanted to voice support for the appellant's. We had a similar situation with an appeal that we had last year, and I, I believe that, you know, if you're looking at the code, you just have to consider the neighborhood characteristics. It's in there in the code, in that zoning code. And yes, I believe that's all I really have to say. Oh, and about the, the DRB's, the conditions, you guys have also said that those aren't very clear all the time, so that's come up a lot too, so that's another concern. Thank you.
Now, I'm guessing Elizabeth Shahjani, you're also speaking in support of the appeal? Okay, two minutes. State your name for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Elizabeth Shahjani. I'm a resident of the Verdugo Woodlands, and I'm here to support the appellant's position as, having gone through the same ordeal last year as the appellant's are going this year, I truly understand and appreciate their position. I am respectfully asking that you make the right decision tonight for the appellant's, taking into consideration compatibility, size, scale, and mass of this proposed project compared to the surrounding houses. I know there is a hesitation, to use the word mansion, and mansionization sometime, but when we say that, we mean to, what we mean to say is that a house in one community may be small, and the same house in another community may be large. So the issue, the true issue is context and compatibility. And so in light of that, where are we taking our communities, especially Verdugo Woodlands, with this mansionization? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so who's going to speak on behalf of the applicant respondents? What's your name, sir?
Hamlet Zorabians. I'm the project.
Okay. And you will, you will present your case? Hamlet Zorabians, how much time do you need, sir?
I'm basically, I need like about ten, fifteen minutes to present, and then if there's any questions from you, then I'll be available.
Let's start with ten. Let's concentrate on ten minutes. Thank you.
That's fine. Before we begin, I just wanna give you a handout.
I'll take it here, sir. Absolutely.
And the reason I'm giving you this handout is because this set, what you have, it indicates after the proposed project and revisions thereof, when we are, after we are implementing all the comments and recommendations by the DRB. So that, that might clear up a little bit, just to orient ourselves what we are talking about. The perspective that you see there, it's already, the room above the garage is removed, which we have agreed to. So this, this project that we have, the existing lot that we are working on, it's a very unique lot, and from the very beginning, we noticed this thing because it's an already graded lot with an existing building on it, which, it's a very old rundown house, which we're proposing to remove and replace. But what, another unique, uniqueness about this particular lot is because the existing house was surrounded by oak trees. And from the very beginning of the design, we intended to keep the oak trees and not to remove them, to preserve them. So therefore, what, what we did, you know, right from the beginning, we met with the city arborist, and we went through a schematic design and site plan with him. We reviewed each, each tree there, and as far as the viability of the project, and he agreed with, with, with me, specifically, I met with him, that the, the project is viable between, and he was basically praising the location of the house, the way it's set up, in order to preserve all the existing oak trees. Now that particular, I wanna just mention, clarify something here. There was a number nine oak tree that came up, came about in the comments. That ninety, number nine oak tree is clearly shown in one of your pages there. It's the landscape page. And that particular existing tree, it's a smaller tree, however, it's not on the same path, and it sits on the slope itself, and it's about, I would say about six to seven feet. It starts from above the grade. And then by the time it goes up about twelve feet, then you have your canopy of the tree itself. It's not in a great condition, and that was already observed by, by the city arborist, and he has some, made some recommendations to, to prune it. And as you know, we're gonna have to adhere to all the permits and everything that is necessary to, to do that. And we are obviously going to have to. And we are obviously going to have to get permits for each oak trees. Now, we're talking about eight oak trees existing, which we are preserving. There is a one sycamore tree, twenty-six inch, in front of the building, in the parkway, which we are, obviously, we're not touching that. As a part of that, there is an existing low wall, which is a stone wall, which we are preserving. And the house, the way we have situated it, it, it will go right in the same vicinity and same location of the existing house and same, almost same orientation. And because the oak trees, existing oak trees are concentrated on the west side, we had more space on the right hand side to work with. So, what happened was, we proposed to demolish the existing non-conforming garage, which was detached, and they proposed that attached garage to it. Now, DRB, here the, I mean, when we filed this project, we have gone through vigorous reviews by the planning, planning department, many months we've been working together with the staff, to come up with the, the best solution possible. We have provided a lot of clarifications. And at, at the, when this was presented in DRB, project obviously, as you know, it was approved, but there were seven conditions there. Now, the seven conditions that they were there, I think the, the whole objection that is contained in, in the, in the, in the appeal, it just basically revolves around the language of, of the recommendation itself, the major, at least major part of it. Because it, as we, they have already gone through it, but I just want to mention it to you. And I go one by one and I show you according to the sketches that I gave you, the, the package that I gave you, how we have dealt with this situation. So, the very first condition that was stating that, that was saying that, that we have to lower the plates, plate heights for the first floor, ten feet, and the second floor, eight feet, that's what we've done. And you can see the, the changes on our plans there. So, the height went down twenty-four inches, two feet, throughout the whole, you know, building itself. The second recommendation was an option for us to, if we are not going to reduce the plate heights, we should entertain removing the bedroom above the garage and relocating it to the backside of the building. So, in this case, we have agreed to respond to all the concerns. What we have done, we have removed both the, the bedroom above the garage, relocated it to the rear of the project. And I'm trying to open this up. I have so many materials here. And at the same time, we have lowered the entire, you know, plate height from, from ten, from eleven to ten, second floor from nine to eight. And so, also, there is a, as you can see, if you, if you open up to A three point two, you can see how we have resolved the issue of the windows as well. What we have done there, we reversed the master bath with the, with the bedroom itself, since we are removing the bedroom above the garage. So, we have created the window to the bedroom from the right-hand side, if you would, if you will take a look at it, the master bedroom. So, now, all the windows that are facing the, the rear neighbor, they're all basically bathroom windows or they're very small windows that are just for briefs. And we are agreeing to, we are agreeing to make the glass opaque in some way, which we, we can discuss it with the staff as far as that's concerned. But, but we have, we have already agreed to remove and relocate the bedroom to the rear side where our terrace used to be. So, we have eliminated completely the terrace in the back. There are no bed, no balconies in the rear of the property. And also, at the same time, if you look at the perspective, that the new perspective doesn't have the two balconies or the terraces that was in the front. So, we are basically, again, adhering to what was said. The lowering of the slope of the roof itself gave us another eleven inches. And I'm, I'm pretty much sure when it, when it's, you know, processed through building and safety and all, it's possibly, it's like around twelve inches. It's not, doesn't have to be eleven inches. So, we're talking about, effectively, we have lowered the entire building three feet down.
That's what I was going to ask, Mr. Zorabians.
Yes.
Because I'm looking at your plans and I, A four point one, which shows the elevation.
Correct.
It says it's twenty foot, three, twenty-three, six inches high. And this is a four, four to twelve roof, right? Four to twelve pitch.
Four point one is, is already revised. So, on the left-hand side, because garage is already twelve inch lower than that. So, on the left-hand side, it's twenty-three foot, six inches is the total height, yes.
But your, your roof pitch is three to one or four to...
No, this is already changed. It's four in twelve.
So, it's four in twelve. It's not three to twelve?
No, no, it's three in twelve, I'm sorry. Three in twelve. It's a one to four scenario. It's not one, see, four in twelve means one to three ratio, which is steeper than that. So, what we have done, we have lowered it from, from, from four into, in twelve to three in twelve. Three in twelve will be short, I mean, kind of shallower rather than, so it's, so this includes that, in other words.
I... Okay. Original building height was twenty-five point six, twenty foot, twenty-five feet, six inches high?
On the left-hand side?
No, no, overall, original, when the DRB looked at this project, your building height was twenty-five and a half, right?
Hold on a second, I can show it to you. I have the old one here, if I may. Twenty-six, four. It used to be twenty-six, four, on the left-hand side. That same location.
Right, where the two stories is, yes.
Correct. So, I have lowered it to twenty-three, twenty-three, six, I'm saying?
Okay, so that's...
Yeah, so it's approximately thirty-six inches, three feet.
Okay.
And that affects the right-hand side as well. It's, the effectiveness is the same way. Because it used to be twenty-seven, six, now three feet down is twenty-four, six, on the garage side.
Can I ask, have you given a copy of this to the appellants?
No.
Do you think...
No, unfortunately, no.
Excuse me. Have you given this to our staff?
No, this is just, this is what I've, because this, this hearing is about revising the conditions.
Correct.
And so, I'm just demonstrating to you, with revised conditions, what would, what would happen after we are revising the...
Right.
Conditions.
I, I'd like for the appellants to see this while you're explaining it to us.
Of course.
If you thought another copy would...
Of course. Can I give them a copy for them to circulate? Of course.
Please.
Can I, Mr. Zorabians, you don't have to go, but I have a question from our staff.
Okay.
Did they make...
Maybe, I'm sorry. Yeah, maybe we can just finish with Mr. Zorabians.
Keep a question for staff. Let's get them back on time.
Sorry, they'll give you more time.
While they're reviewing for your direction, we are agreeing to all the modified conditions.
Can we have some silence?
We are agreeing to the modified conditions and we have no problem with that. We have already revised it, privacy issues, any, any of the issues. I wish we would have had the opportunity to sit down with the neighborhood and go over it. And I had assured them at one point of time that I will work with them to do this thing, but it did not happen, unfortunately. But I felt that I have to have this revision done for you, at least so you, so you can see what could happen. It's just a demonstration of how, how can, you know, what, what the conditions that was included in the DRB decision can change the building itself. So, that's what...
Thank you, sir. Are you, are you finished with your presentation?
Well, I'm, I'm finished up, but there, there are a couple of items that was spoken about, like the neighborhood list and everything.
Like to address, please do.
The copy that, yeah, the copy that was there was a very older copy. And I don't know how that was posted or something by mistake, but this is, this was the one that was presented to the DRB and it's more accurate than that. And so, there is, there is a couple of typos on that. But still, there are six two-story buildings there. And technically, they are two-story. Anyway, you look at it, it's two-story, whether it's on the hillside or not, the massing of it, the presence of it, it's two-story. So, as far as that is concerned, is there, I addressed, I kind of clarified number nine tree. And if, I'll be available if you have any other questions, you can ask me. And then the last item was, was to have a more, you know, kind of muted palette for the plaster, which we do have the, but I, we were supposed to basically sit down with the, with the staff and go over it. And that's what we will do, definitely. So, I'll be available if you have any other questions.
Thank you. You have questions for Mr. Zorabians?
Yes. The second, second story, the material, is this a wood clad? What, what is the material on the second story?
Yes, it is a wood. We haven't changed that. This is the, this is the board. This is a wood, wood siding.
Wood siding.
Yeah. It's a composite wood siding, as you can see.
Okay. Because the neighborhood, most of the homes are in, in that style.
Yeah.
It's, it's like a ranch style and, but I, I want, because the renderings that I had in my packet didn't give me all the information I needed, and this is very helpful. Okay, thank you, Mr. Zorabians.
What we presented, by the way, in DRB was more modern, but what, what you have in your hands right now, it's more sensitive and to change the materials and everything this way.
Okay, that's...
Okay. Thank you, sir. And, you know, before I go to the next speaker, Mr. Zorabians, you have a question for staff?
I have a question from staff. The report which you have provided to us, was it based on this set of drawings or whatever was you had before?
The, the report that we provided is based on the review set that the DRB looked at and based its conditions on. We, we hadn't had the opportunity to see this, but it does seem to address most of the conditions that we're recommending in your modified condition that we're recommending.
Some of your recommendation has been considered in this new set of drawings?
I believe, I haven't had a chance to look at the full package, but I believe that all, all of them seem to have been addressed, yeah.
I have...
Yes, go ahead. Who do you have? We have speakers, but...
Yes, do the speaker.
Okay, let's do that. So, Sally Nielsen? Two minutes?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll be brief. I just wanted to come to represent a lot of our neighbors who aren't appellants, but who are interested in this because it's our neighborhood. And I'm Sally Nielsen and I live on Alpha Road. So, I live around the corner from the proposed project. But I purposely, when I have to go to Verdugo, I purposely go that street compared to straight down Alpha because it's such a charming neighborhood and street area. So, the people that kind of asked me to, to come and to represent us, wanted to really stress that we can depend upon you to maintain the neighborhood characteristics. And that was really important to them, that that be a part of this decision. And also, just to throw out there, the concept of property values, in that if an inappropriate home is built, as the woman was talking about in Verdugo Woodlands, is built in an area, that can negatively affect the property values of those that have to look at it, those that are around it, those that are looking into it. And so, that would be a concern, is that it could have a ripple effect as to when they do comparables, in that the people that live behind it, their property values have been lowered. Because who wants to buy a house when people are just looking right into their windows or their yard? So, they just wanted me to just remind people to keep that in the back of your heads as to an element. But anyway, I, we really support the presentation of the, of our, the group because...
So, you're, you're supporting the appeal?
You, yes. I, I didn't, when you, anyway.
Okay.
You called me before, but then you left me out, so. Anyway, thank you much for your time.
Yeah. I called on all these supporters of the appellants a few times, but, okay. David Gasparian, followed by Armin Ashvanyan.
Good evening. Let me introduce myself, since everybody does it. My name is David Gasparian. I live in Glendale for over twenty-two years. And this year, I'm a recipient of Academy Award in scientific and technical achievements. So, and I'm here to support this project. I love the design. I love the size. My family is, we are seven of us in my household, and I don't want to sleep with my, basically, mother-in-law in the same bedroom. So, I like it big. So, thank you very much.
Okay.
Is this your house? This is your house?
No.
Oh, no.
I'm, I'm planning to make my house bigger too.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And I don't want to get in the same type of problems.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Armin Ashvanyan, followed by Miriam Strysik. Two minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members, staff. My name is Armin Ashvanyan and I'm a twenty-five-year Glendale resident. And for last twelve years, I live in North Glendale. And I'm very familiar with the area. I'm here to support this project at eighteen forty-nine Los Encinos location. And because the, the design itself is very interesting. It's well nested in the area, in this specific lot. And I think every homeowner in this beautiful city should have a right to improve the living condition, renovate, rebuild their properties. Because I myself planning to renovate my house and eventually, I'm going to make it a little bit bigger. And I heard a lot of comments about the mass and scale. I think that the lot, the ten thousand square foot lot allows to build property in this scale. So, for that reason, I'm supporting the project. And I understand neighborhood, neighborhoods' concerns, that they want the airflow and sunlight and, but the most important, that the applicant is willing to cooperate and make all the corrections. For that reason, I'm supporting the project and I appreciate if it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Miriam Strysik.
Well, I support the appeal.
Okay. You, you good? You're not going to speak?
I thought we were done.
I thought we were done too. How many times I called on the supporters of the appellants?
My name is Miriam Strysik and I live on Mira Vista, probably about four or five houses down. And I'm not one of the appellants, but I'm here to support them. You know, when, just want to share that, that when my husband and I went to look at a house, at our house on Mira Vista Drive nineteen years ago, we couldn't believe how charming the area was. And he nicknamed it the Munchkin Neighborhood because of the small house sizes and each one was unique. And we loved it. And that's why we bought there. So, just asking that, you know, everybody think about if it were you and there was a large building, you know, next to your home, unexpected, or suddenly, you know, how would we all feel? You know, there's a balance between property rights. So, just asking that you take into consideration the, you've seen the, the pictures, you know, the impact of the size and the height on the sunlight, the airflow, the privacy, you know, of these, of these, particularly these three neighboring properties. And as people have pointed out, you know, in the codes, it does say to keep in mind the neighborhood, you know, that you have to do it, you have to consider it. And this property just really seems to be outside. So, if we can at least, you know, mitigate and try to help our neighbors out, we'd really appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's the last speaker. I'm going to give a, an opportunity of rebuttal to the, to Mr. Longstaff or Ms. Pope, one of you, but I'll give you jointly five minutes to address whatever issues were raised by the applicant.
You?
Five minutes.
Thank you. May I have my presentation back up, please? Thank you very much for the opportunity to rebut. And I appreciated hearing from the architect, Mr. Zorabians, as well, and the public comments. And I appreciated hearing from the architect, Mr. Zarabians, as well, and the public comments. So what I'd like to share in my rebuttal is a couple of things we heard and what Mr. Zarabian stated. I have to object. I think a lot of the things he stated, I disagree with. So he mentioned that oak tree number nine, it is elevated up on a pad, I do agree with that. But he did say that you have to go about 12 feet up to get to the crown. Actually, I don't think that's true. Because if you look at some of these photos that I showed earlier, you know, you're, you're looking at a photo of the tree, especially on the right side, that's kind of drooping down almost to the ground at this point. That's the bottom of the building, the existing building, and you see story poles go straight up, all the way up to the top. So again, the problem really is just the excessive height. He mentioned, I think it was about 27 and a half feet on one side, and then 26 and feet and four inches on the other side, so just really, really tall. He also mentioned that this tree, according to the arborist that he talked with, that visited the site with him, said it's actually in poor condition. My reading of the arborist's report that was supplied in the public information packet, which I believe was provided to Mr. Zarabians as the client, I don't see that it says that this tree is in poor health. I don't recall seeing that. I also want to mention that, yeah, so even though it's on a slope, actually, that's probably part of the problem, is that even though it's growing on a slope, that the canopy is kind of growing towards the subject property. And with the existing building, not that much of a problem, because it's a modest-sized building. Even if you had a taller one-story building, or a two-story building that was not quite so excessively tall, you wouldn't have this much interference with the canopy of the tree. I do also want to point out the rendering that Mr. Zarabian shared with us tonight. I think the illustration is actually quite beautiful. I love the colors. It provides a really beautiful, portrays a really beautiful scene, actually. But I want to say that when I look at how it relates to the property behind it, I don't think it's accurate. So what I want to share with you is this photo. If you take a look at the rendering he just shared with you, that front page, that beautiful illustration, take a look at the home that's sitting directly behind it. It looks like it's sighted at quite a distance from the subject property, that there's a lot of green space in between, that you can see from Los Encinos, standing in front of the subject property, that you have a clear view to the, to the home behind with that second-level bedroom removed. So I would say that the scale of that is pretty different from what you're seeing here. That here, even if you had that second bedroom removed, I think you'd still have an excessively tall building that's actually much, much closer to that rear property line. That rear setback is still actually quite close. One other thing I wanted to share is, again, the gentleman who spoke earlier about seeing his home on the television, and then coming by to the meeting and speaking on behalf of the appeal. So we have that in our presentation in the appendix. We wanted to show that, yes, we do have some taller-looking homes in the neighborhood that were within the 300 linear feet. But again, these homes, as the gentleman mentioned, he's the owner of one of those homes, these hillside homes, the lots are very steep, but the homes are mostly pretty small, pretty modest-sized. And so though they have the appearance of being a comp or a relevant precedent for this current project, we don't believe that's the case. These, in fact, are smaller, more modest houses. These are smaller, more steep hillside lots. They have no rear neighbors, so they're not presenting any issues with blocking sunlight, open air, airflow, or cutting off the visual relationship for any neighbors behind them. Finally, I would just like to add, ultimately, it really does just come back to the excessive size, mass, and scale. We, I think you've gotten a clear sense for what our neighborhood is now, cozy, storybook, charming. We definitely understand property owners have the right to build. I appreciate some of the speakers that mentioned they like to expand their new own homes. We, as homeowners, feel the same way. We'll probably maybe one day do the same thing, too. But we also want to stress, that's not the only factor. A person's right to develop their property doesn't trump other homeowners' rights to enjoy their own properties, to enjoy that access to open air, enjoy that access to sunlight, and enjoy having a neighbor that's compatible to their own home and neighborhood as well. So, thank you again for listening to my rebuttal. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pope. Okay. Do we now, do we have any questions for staff?
I have a couple of questions for Ms. Pope.
Yeah, of course, now is the time.
Okay. In, in your report, number seven on the "We seek simple and straightforward remedies," page 37.
Right.
"Utilize remaining open space on the lot to lower height and alleviate mass of the project." Can you be more explicit on that?
Correct, yeah. So we put that there as towards the end of the list. We really wanted to just sort of put the thought there, kind of as a thought starter, that my husband and I reviewed the video recording of the DRB meeting, and in it, we believe it was DRB Chair Malekian, Mr. Malekian himself, who made a comment about how, you know, there's actually quite a lot of open lots, open space, pardon me, on this lot. Given that this is, even though it's a large second-story, two-story design, he observed, you know, there's a lot of open space on the lot. Yes, we do have a lot of oak trees, but even so, there's other open space. So could we not find some way to address these mass, height issues, and utilize that remaining open space to alleviate that? So we just wanted to capture the spirit of what he said. We found it really, really relevant. We thought it was valuable to share that with you as a thought starter. So I just wanted to include that here.
Okay. And my second question is, how would you propose to mitigate the oak problem, the oak issue?
Yeah, so I think ultimately, that really does come back to, I would say, you know, following through on what we've seen the city itself say, there really shouldn't be construction or disturbance to the oak tree trunk within 10 feet. And again, the issue is really the excessive height is coming up into that canopy. And then the scaffolding next to the construction for this excessive height will also kind of add that additional cushion that cuts into the canopy. So it's really the excessive height. Not so much the bedroom itself moving to that side of the building if the building were lower. So I just want to make that distinction. At one point in the DRB meeting, there was discussion of maybe moving the bedroom to the first floor, but then the conversation sort of moved in a different direction. So I want, I want to say ultimately, it's really that excessive height, excessive mass, pushing really far back to the rear property line, you know, coming closer than that 15.5 or 15 and a half feet setback that we heard. So it's really about those issues that I feel like should be mitigated or should be addressed.
My final question has a little to do with what Chair Malekian said about the height of the building and the fact that is that going to change the, the scale. And my question to you is, you, as the appellants, requested two feet, 10 and eight. Are you satisfied with that, that, that he's willing, the architect is changing it to a two, two-foot lower, two-feet lower house? I mean, when I saw the story poles, it was shocking. And so when I see the report and it says, well, we'll take off one foot from this floor and one foot from, and it adds up to two feet. And I'm thinking, that's only going to bring the story poles down a bit, not a whole lot. Are you, that's what you requested? I mean, that's what you requested as the appellants.
Right, so I'd like to speak to that, and you raise a really great point. So the reason we structured our appeal that way is the language in the original decision coming out of the DRB meeting was so vague. It was so difficult for us to understand because of the usage of and/or, connecting various conditions, sometimes saying if you do one, you don't have to do the other, or you can do both. It was just really unclear. So being first-time appellants, we felt like, well, let's really focus on clarifying that language, making it clear, capturing exact measurements, exact height reductions where possible, so that it's really enforceable by the community and by the, by the planning department, rather. We see it as a reduction in two feet by lowering the first-floor plate height, second-floor plate height. But also that reduction in the roof pitch. We heard the architect, Mr. Zarabian, say it should be about 11 inches, about 12 inches. That was stated as well as an estimate by one of the DRB members in the meeting. So we see that as really a net height reduction of three feet, at the very least. But what we would like to offer to the city council tonight is, we think if the city council sees an opportunity to further address the excessive height mass scale, bring in more compatibility by taking down more of the height, then really, we welcome that, because we think that would make that more compatible with our neighborhood, more compatible with the existing character, the existing fabric of the Verdugo Woodlands.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. No more questions? Okay. Who wants to go first?
I just make a small comment, and then. In 1890, the average square footage of a house was 400 square feet. In 1973, the average house has been 1,660, sometimes they say 1,600. This was in 1973. So I don't want to read other years, but year by year, the average house became larger. So I do not know if this list, which was provided by, I don't know, which group provided, but however, appellant maybe, provided this. When I average what has been provided, I didn't go see all those houses around this subject project, has been considered in this list or not. But I take it the way it has been presented. And when you do that, as has been mentioned here, the average property size is 5,071 square feet, and the average improvement is 1,320. This subject property is 10,140, exactly twice as large than average house around the neighborhood. So if I just go by that, not considering these houses, probably, some of them are there since 19, I don't know, 30, 40, 50, which was smaller, they were built in smaller, as I brought the example of 1890, which was 400 square feet, or 1973, which was 1,600 feet. So if this property is twice as large as the average house in that neighborhood, so at least, based on the average improvement in that neighborhood, this property with that kind of land of 10,140, they can have at least 2,640 square feet of improvement, I mean, the new building. And if I consider the average, which I said was since 1920s, 30s, whatever, so, and considering in 1973, the average was 1,600, so I think this house, if it's up to 3,000, it's not unusual for this neighborhood, based on the numbers which I'm presenting. So I just wanted to bring this to everybody's attention. And I have a few more comments, but I do it a little bit later.
Okay, but that's what we're doing now, so you might as well.
So I know, but I just want to hear my colleagues, what they say, and then, but I just wanted to bring the numbers to everybody's attention, that this is a little bit larger than the average, but it's not off the line.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Nigerian?
Going to go to me again, huh? Okay. It seems to me that there are, that there is some consensus, is there not, on some of the clarification on the conditions? The appeal was made, as Ms. Pope said, to, to clarify and to make certain the height issues that are related to the conditions DRB put forward. So are there not, did I not hear that the applicant was willing to do the 10-foot first plate? What do you call it, the plate? Eight-foot second plate, remove the, the bedroom from the garage and replace it to another location. What are the outstanding issues here? I know there's the issue with the tree, concern about the health of the tree, and the arborist says that it's too close, and there's a risk of death of the tree. The balconies are eliminated, correct? The natural color palette is, you know, you, you showed me the little plate, it kind of looks like our wall color, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, something like that. So what else is, is out there? I mean, I think it might be beyond, I feel almost going beyond my authority if, if the appellants have asked for a clarification on conditions, and my decision is to not permit the house at all. I mean, we're talking about these particular conditions and making them enforceable. I think that it's pretty clear as to the height calculations. You're going to go to the, the three, the 312 pitch, which is going to help you get three-foot lower, apparently we were, you know, you were counting inches at one point, but approximately a three-foot lower height. I'm, I'm sort of at a loss as to where I can, as to why I should intervene. I mean, that, they've almost met what everyone's asking for. The tree is still out there, but the, the bedroom over the garage, the total height, the, the three-over-12 pitch, the balconies. I mean, you guys are almost seeing eye to eye on this. So I'm not sure what, I'm not sure, I don't want to stir it up anymore. I mean, I think we're very close to consensus. I guess it happened without everybody knowing it. It, it happened here in front of us. So I'm, I'm happy with the clarification. It looks like that if we enforce these, these, I guess, the offer, the new plan that the applicant has set forth, that we're almost there. We have to decide what we're going to do with the tree, but I'm, I mean, I'm.
So you're, you're for, you seem to be in support of sustaining the DRB decision with the modified, with the modified conditions?
Yeah, that's where I'm at. I mean, that's.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Vane?
Well, I, I just want to say that, you know, I, like I said before, I went out and looked and saw the story poles, and I was in, in shock. So I, I did some research, and, and of course, in the, in the staff report, and I'm getting this kind of feel from what we've heard tonight. The chair, Alan Malekian, and I have great respect for his opinion, he said the scale of the proposed building will not be reduced by lowering the plate height, and the massing of the house will still remain too large. And I think that's the issue right now, is the fact that even lowering, I mean, that's just two feet, that's just two feet that we're lowering this house. It's enormous. If you saw the, the story poles, and I was going to request that we, we, and I want to thank the architect for bringing in the plans, that, that you took the time to change your draw, your, your whole design. And I really appreciate that. I thought that was very helpful and very, very nice of you to do. However, then finding out that there was also the suggestion that there is more property here to be used, that perhaps this could be a one-story house. So my suggestion was going to be to remand this to design review, back to design review, and, and absolutely install the story poles again, so that we can see the new design, so that we can actually, because it's very difficult to imagine height, scale, mass, without seeing some, for me, anyway, a visual. And that would really be helpful. So that would be my request. The architect was good enough to, and, to do these new drawings, and perhaps if we send it back to, to redesign, he can look into a one-story. And maybe the house could even be larger, but lower. And that perhaps would satisfy the appellants. And, and that would be my suggestion. And, and that would be my suggestion.
Okay. So you want to overturn the decision. Mr. Carpetian?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I, I went to the neighborhood as well and drove around and knocked on their, their door on a Friday morning. I apologize for just dropping in, and I think one of the properties that is most, most affected is the Pope's property, and because they're blocked on both sides. One side is their house, blocked on both sides, there are trees and garages on one side, and, you know, the other neighbor has other, I don't know, property or fence or what have you. So the only view they have is through that one side of their yard, looking down the, the street below, which is Los Encinos. And my, when I looked at the story polls, I saw the line of the garage that was blocking, the, the mass above the garage that's blocking that, that, that yard. So by removing that mass, I think it will, no matter what they do, even if they go to a one-story house, one question, what is the, the height limit here in this, in this neighborhood?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five feet? The height limit is 35? Even if you have a one-story, you can have a...
Thirty-five feet with a pitched roof, which this house has.
Right. The top of the, the pitch of the roof is 35. So you can have a one-story house, a Tudor house, and have a 25-feet-tall building, 25-foot-tall building. So, they cannot build an invisible house, basically. Either it's one-story or two-story. And it's always easy to say the, bring the mass down and put it here and put it there. It doesn't work that way. Even, even more so on this side, when you look at where the oak trees are, if you want to increase the mass on the first floor, you're going to get closer to that 10 or 20-feet restrictions that they have, having a, no, no construction zone around the oak trees. So, and the appeal was based on the, the appellants' request, basically. The appeal has these conditions, and every item is being addressed to your demands, basically, to appeals terms. And I don't know, sending it back to design review, what is it going to do to this building? Because you can build, there is a building on 18, I took some pictures of it, 1849, if I'm not mistaken. It's a Tudor house, and it's a really tall house, but it doesn't look two-story, maybe two-story, because most of them have this, the dormers on the second floor. And this, this design looks a lot better than the first one that we had in our packet. The material they introduced, the color palette, having the, the sidings, having the veneer or the stones on the garage, and the, that matches the, the driveway and everything else. I don't know what else they can do. Even if they build a one-story house, which is 20, 20 feet tall, you're still going to have, my main concern was the mass over the garage that they removed. As far as the oak trees, they had to comply with our code and build according to the, what the code will allow, and the building department will not allow them to build if they're not complying with the oak tree rules. And we want to save every tree that we have. I have one, one nitpicking to do with the architect, if I may. One question for you. In the rear of the property, you have this precast concrete seal on one or two windows, I believe, right? It's, it's item 15. And that's, I don't see that anywhere else. I mean, I would, I would ask you to take a look at it. Sorry?
One question. One more question.
Yes, yes, please approach the podium. I just want to ask this. As I'm designing with for four years, I read little things that I see I have to mention. Sorry about that.
All right. I just don't have my set ready to itself. Go ahead. I will remember.
The, the rear of the property, you have the window seals, which is a precast concrete seal. I think it's only for one or two windows. None of the other windows have this.
No, no, we will, we will, we will continue that. In other words, we will do that for every window, the precast.
The...
But the ones that they don't have...
Precast seal?
The seal for the, some of the windows that are small, it doesn't make sense to have the seal, but...
Right.
I think you're referring to that, because there's a window, the bedroom windows, they have a precast seal underneath. Is that...
It does.
No?
No, they don't have it. If you look at your plan, I think...
Sure. This is the old one right now, but...
A4.2?
4.2, yeah.
A4.2, item 15?
Yeah, precast concrete seal.
Does it, does it go all the way around the building?
No, no, it doesn't go everywhere. That's, that's particularly in front of the kitchen, so you have a precast there. The smaller windows don't have the precast seal, only the large ones. Now, the other ones we have eliminated, so you're not going to have that, only on the side where you have the bedroom ones.
Yeah.
Not everywhere.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right.
I mean, we can discuss this with the staff as well.
Yeah, I mean, that's not, not a big deal, but...
So, so you're...
Well, you must have been tough on DRB, Mr. Carpetian, because I didn't see that one.
Glad I didn't come in front of you.
By the way, I just want to make sure, I forgot to say that the second floor itself is setback 12 feet from the first floor.
I saw that, yeah.
I'm sure that...
And one, one more question while I have you there. That rear setback?
Yes.
That, what's the rear, I can't, I can't read this.
Rear setback?
Yeah. From the property line?
15 foot five inches.
15 five, it's not 11 feet?
No.
So that's, it has to be built based on this, this plan. Maybe the story polls are set a little bit closer to the property line?
Yeah, story polls, when, because when they're putting it in, sometimes it's very difficult to practically put it in the right location. There's some of them that could be here and there.
And that may be an issue with the oak tree, that, that...
It's possible.
They, they put it too close to the oak tree, that's why those, those lines are going into the, to the branches.
It's, it's possible.
Okay.
Well, we have to obtain a permit for the oak tree anyway, so whatever, well, whatever the requirements would be.
All right. Well, to me, the, the appeal was based on these conditions that was brought up within the appeal. If the applicant is going to comply with every single one of them, I'm, I'm okay with the, with the way this presented and move forward.
With the, the modified version?
With the modified version, yeah. Sending it back to DRB doesn't make any sense to me.
They have already touched the issues, which I was going to say, I'm okay with the modified version. Thank you. And I'm the last one, and again, in the interest of time, I'm not going to regurgitate everything that was said. As, as was mentioned, it, staff is making, you know, DRB has made a decision, and staff is making a recommendation with the modification, and the applicant is willing to abide by all of them. I mean, this, this really, other than being overly subjective, there's not much room to maneuver for, for us. So, one more thing I want to mention.
One more thing that I would like to mention is, is communication from the architect with the neighbors, and I think if these plans were submitted to them or presented to them, and, you know, on the side, you can talk about why this story poll is on the 11, you know, feet setback instead of 15 feet, it would, it would clear a lot of issues. I think even now, it's not too late to have that communication between neighbors, basically. And that's what we, we really encouraged when I was on design review, and that doesn't change. I think it's important for you to present this case to them in person tomorrow, the day after, and address some of the issues that they have right now. But as, as far as the appeal goes, I think I'm, we're willing to vote for the appellant and move forward with this project with the revised...
Will someone move item?
I just want to say, finally, one of this one, I just, again, want to thank the architect, because it's not often that we get cases like this, and the architect comes with the change of plans and the new, the new design, etc.
Microphone.
Thank you for that. Very good. Great.
I, you know what, we're, I've closed the public hearing already, so we're, we're about to, someone will move 9, 9D1?
I move.
Is that with the modified?
That's the modified version, yes.
Oh, second.
May we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Agajian?
Yes.
Devine?
This is to uphold the appellants.
No, it's, it's...
This is to uphold DRB decision with modifications.
With the appellants, yes.
Yes.
Well, yeah.
No, it's not the appellants.
It's not upholding the appeal, I mean, it's basically...
It's not the appellants, it's the applicants. It's the respondent applicants.
With, with the conditions as, as modified.
Yes.
Go on, I guess that's a yes vote for me.
Yes.
Councilmember Garavetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanyan?
Yes. And done with that item. Thank you very much, everyone. Please, folks, it's 10:40 in the evening, and we're going to move to next item, which is oral...
Next item would be oral communication.
Oral communication. Do we have cards? Of course we do.
12 would be discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda.
Folks, our meeting's still, we're, we're still holding a meeting here.
Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay, we have one card?
Yes.
Thank you. Owen Lewis? Owen Lewis?
He's right there.
I feel kind of bad, it's so late. It's past my bedtime.
Give me one, give me one second before you start. Folks, we're trying to finish our meeting. Thank you.
Just saying, I feel kind of bad, it's so late and it's past my bedtime. I appreciate your staying, but I've been here this long, so here goes. Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, my name is Owen Lewis, I live in Glen Oaks Canyon. I'm here to talk about the Grayson Repowering Project and its relationship to the Shoal Canyon Power Project. I'd just like to remind city council that the city is apparently in violation of secret rules by separating the two projects in the environmental review process. They've been operationally connected since 1974, I believe. The Shoal Canyon Landfill Power Project is even included in the Grayson Repowering Project budget. I think you can anticipate a core challenge if you go forward with separating these two projects in the environmental review process. Just to talk about landfill gas and the things, I have some documents I want to share with you. This is a Justice Network landfill gas primer. I'd like you to read the section on halogens, which burning produces dioxins and furans, the most toxic chemicals ever studied. Whatever method you use to convert landfill gas to energy should include removing and cleaning these contaminants from the landfill gas and the proper disposal. I note also that internal combustion engines, which are the type you specified for the Shen, Shoal Canyon Landfill Project, are the dirtiest of all available technology. They are no better than flaring in terms of air pollution, and carbon monoxide and noxious oxide, and they are the absolute worst in terms of emitting dioxins. That's why these units have to have 40-foot exhaust stacks, the same as the flaring units that are going to be on the landfill. And keep in mind that depending on the wind direction, you'll be spewing these contaminants all over Glendale, parts of Los Angeles, and Pasadena. I have here an EPA study of combined heat and power technology, and specifically microturbines and combined heat and power, for the most combined efficient and clean emission alternative for converting landfill gas to electricity. Combined heat and power can best be exploited by locating them at Grayson, utilizing the existing pipeline that built at great expense. Now, I know that Glendale Water and Power says the pipeline is old, having reached the end of its service life, and is dangerous. I have here a, a presentation from January of 2017 that says otherwise. It is, it says that the pipeline is perfectly safe and in good condition. I have a copy of that for you to look at when you're ready. I also have here a, a blog from GE Power called Transform that talks about the benefits of heating air intake of large turbine generators to improve plant flexibility. It has to do with the way large turbines are throttled back for part, partial power operation. And by, by using, by injecting heat in the intake process, you can increase the load flexibility and efficiency. In other words, you can operate these large turbines at much lower power output without shutting down the entire turbine. Now, locating microturbines at Grayson would make a fine, make free heat available for this innovative technology, but not just free heat, a byproduct of electricity production. Even if you don't, you know, use the, the by, heat byproduct for this innovative technology, you can use it to run steam generators, which are a part of these large combined cycle gas generators that you plan to install. And while you're at it, why not combine microturbines with a fuel cell component? Hydrogen plus heat is a byproduct of this technology, which can be injected into the landfill gas stream to enhance the poor methane content of Shoal Canyon landfill gas, which is less than 30 percent, and which is marginal for any technology to convert landfill gas to electricity. Have I already been talking five minutes?
It has been five minutes, believe it or not. So you want to sum it up?
Well, anyway, I, I'd like you to explore innovative technology. First of all, you have to do both projects in one environmental review project. Ms. Beers mentioned a, a quality of the new, a person that was installed in I T, your technology officer, she said, "He was running towards innovation." Why don't you run toward innovation in these, in this landfill gas and the Grayson Repowering Project, instead of retreating and plotting and mediocrity and poisoning the air and endangering the health and welfare of the residents of Glendale? Because that's what's happening if you go ahead with these, this old technology of internal combustion engines at Shoal Canyon Landfill.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do we have any new business?
We do, we do. I'd like to, to move that the council of City of Glendale hereby authorizes the city attorney to enter into and execute a settlement and release agreement, agreement in parentheses, with ASP Holdings Incorporated, DBA, Aspect LED, Aspect LED parenthesis, in full settlement of the city's lawsuit against the firm, City of Glendale versus ASP Holdings Incorporated, DBA Aspect LED, Los Angeles Superior Court Case Number BC 707005. Among its items, the agreement must provide that Aspect LED shall, number one, furnish the city with 1,000 new UL-certified LED light fixtures manufactured by Nora Lighting as replacements for the Aspect LED fixtures. Number two, pay the city $40,000, $40 per future, per fixture at $1,000, to cover the labor costs for the city's removing the Aspect LED fixtures and installing the Nora Lighting fixtures. And number three, supply the city with shipping boxes and paying the shipping charges for the city's returning Aspect LED fixtures to Aspect LED. Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
May we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Agajian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanyan?
Yes. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
We're adjourned at 11:50 PM.